Dustin, do we have a quorum?
I'm looking right now, Mayor, let's see. You have Bob Latham, Lisa Alderwoman Irving, Alderwoman Mathis, Alderman Frazier, and Alderman Davis. And that's all I have for now.
Dustin, I didn't know if I heard my name.
Oh, there you are. I got you, Sarah. Okay, Alderwoman Sarah is in as well.
Is Alderman Dillard on the call?
He had, he had to get off momentarily to, to take a call real quick, but he said he'd be right back, so.
Is the city clerk on the call?
Yes, the city clerk is on the call, so he is there.
This is Sabina Pointe.
Who is that again? I'm sorry.
This is Sabina Pointe.
Oh, hey, Sabina, there you go. It's got some background noise there on your phone, might want to check that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was on with Sabina, but I was on with Shiffy and Secretary State Bob, we're done.
Okay. Thank you.
All department directors on the call, Dustin?
So far, we have Jody Rutter, we have Rico, we have James, we have Justin Dollar.
Both of the chiefs?
Both of the chiefs, yes, sir.
Sabrina Bartley?
Sabrina is on the line, yes.
Hey, Ma, I'm here. Good morning.
Morning, Fay.
Good morning, this is Dan Dillard.
Good morning, Dan.
Okay, we have, I believe, all of the Aldermen on the call, we have city attorney Latham on the call, and we also have the city clerk on the call, so at this time, I'm going to go on and call the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Aldermen to order at this time. And at this time, I'm requesting for Department Director Sabrina Bartley, if you would open us up with a word of prayer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. We understand that the word of God reminds us that we are to call on Him in any day of trouble, and that He will deliver us, that He is our strength and our refuge and our ever-present help. So this morning, we called upon God Almighty, asking for blessings for our city, our county, for our state, and even our nation. We ask that you would bless this entire world. We pray in particular for the city of Natchez, for Adams County, for our city leaders and, and those who are, who are here, who have been ordained for such a time as this. We ask that you would grant them wisdom, discernment, and open hearts to your leading. We pray for each and every one of them individually. We pray for the families, the communities, the homes and neighbors here in our community. We pray for blessings upon the families. We ask that you would strengthen us and heal our relationships, give us secure thoughts and, and let us be encouragement to one another in our individual homes and in our circles. We pray for those who are on the front line. We pray for the policemen, the firemen, we pray for those individuals who are still educating our children and who are leading us in all areas. We pray for those who are in the nursing fields and in the hospitals and nursing homes and in the medical field. We pray for those who are transporting them to those, and we pray for this community. We pray that thy will be done. So we simply say, "Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be your holy name. Thy kingdom come, and your will be done on earth as it already is in heaven." Oh, God, we ask that you would give us this day our daily bread, and that you would forgive us for our trespasses, just as we forgive those who trespass against us. We pray that you would lead us not into temptation and deliver us from evil, for we understand that thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, and it is forever and ever, and we say amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Amen.
Amen, and thank you, Sabrina. Thank you so much. Before we have the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Alderman Dillard to lead us, but before then, I'm requesting that we pause for a few moments of silence for those individuals who have passed away as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic in our community. As we know, we, we lost one of our citizens on yesterday, and we also lost one this morning as a result of this pandemic. So I ask that we pause for a few moments of silence in honor and in memory of those individuals who have passed away as a result of this pandemic and all of the families who've been impacted. We pause for a few moments of silence in remembrance of individuals who've passed away during this pandemic, where the families have had to have grave-sized services to memorialize the lives of those individuals. So let us pause for a few moments of silence, please. Thank you so much. So at this time, Alderman Dillard, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for which it stands, from one nation, under God, indivisible. Got the end of it.
With liberty and justice for all.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you so much, Alderman Dillard. So at this time, we will have, at this time, we will have the roll call by the city clerk.
Yes, sir, Alderwoman Mathis? Here. Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith? Here. Alderwoman Irving? Here. Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Dillard?
Here.
I'll threaten the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and let me remind everyone who's on this call to please place your phones on mute during this process. That way, we will not have any background noises that can actually interfere with this particular meeting so that everyone can hear. So please mute your phones, and members of the board and other participants, don't forget to unmute your phones when you get ready to participate in the process. So we have a quorum, all members are accounted for. Therefore, the next item on the agenda will be to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of March 4th of this year, 2020. What's the pleasure the board has relate to the minutes of the regular board meeting of March 24th of this year?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mathis?
Yes, I've spoken with the city clerk, and I moved the minutes with some adjustments to them, and I've outlined them to her to check for me.
Okay, there's a motion.
I'm moving with editorial changes.
With editorial changes, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been seconded by Alderman Davis. Unreadiness on the motion? Yes, Mr. Frazier?
I too, I need to get with the city clerk. I have on the minutes, I have some editorial change that need, that need to be done. I was dealing with a vote decision that we had, dealing with the convention center. It was where about I voted nay, and on this, of all the minutes, they had I voted yes, but it was... So I'll give it to the clerk and get that changed.
Okay, is there further unreadiness on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
During the, yes, Ms. Smith?
Are these just, I mean, with the changes, is, is Mr. Alderman Frazier? I know Ms. Mathis has clarified hers are always just grammatical when it's something like this, but are Mr. Frazier's grammatical, or is it something specific that was incorrect?
It was something dealing with, it was dealing with, something dealing with the convention center, and we needed to vote on it. Uh, dealing with the being itself, and as you know, I always voted nay on it, and they, and, uh, I'm sure they had I voted yes. So I just need to change that vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ms. Mathis?
Right, um, um, Smith? Yeah, thank you, Alderwoman Smith. I spoke with her about item number 117, colon, zero, three, slash, 20, and some of the wording is the same, and, and we put may in there, that was our thing we did, and the other one had to do with the second meeting with, um, the last page, and she can explain it to you, where we said, I think it was just a retyping of the motion, but we deferred that motion, and then we acted on it on the 26th, after she had had a chance to check and see if we had the finances to do that. So those were, if you have to really look at it, and you'll see where it is, and then on the, on the 26th at the end, we didn't make another motion because we left, left it, left the stay-at-home order that the mayor had originally given us that we passed, we left it in place with the changes that we had made on the 24th.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just, I know we got these, it's just, I hate to, I don't like, I'm just not, not, I don't like the way we're doing it now, that we're just making changes at the meeting, we're getting them a few days before the meeting, I'd rather see the revised version at the meeting or before the meeting. But anyway, I mean, I'm fine with those changes, because I remember those if I've heard them, but I just want to make sure that going forward, can we get the changes to her? We get a revised version, and then we vote the revised, revised version through at the meeting, please, thank you.
Uh, yes, ma'am, we can certainly do that, we can, if there are any suggested changes to the minutes, that we will do it in such a form that members can know what those modifications would be, and they will be highlighted and given to the board member. Uh, is it, do we want to defer approval in these minutes until the next meeting so that members can see what these modifications, uh, or changes are? Are, are you okay in terms of adopting?
I can accept that as a, as a friendly amendment to defer, because I did call her before, but, but the way we're working, she didn't, she's not going, she didn't have a chance to get them out to us. But I'll move to defer until those corrections are put in there.
Okay, and that the members can see what the corrections are, where it is changing from currently to the new corrections, so that members can know what those changes are? Is that understood, Ms. Mathis?
That's fine, that's what I'm doing.
Okay, all right, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Uh, okay, Alderwoman Smith, second, the motion to defer approval of the minutes? Further unreadiness, I mean, is there unreadiness on the deferment? If there be none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous that the minutes, their approval be deferred until the next minute, next meeting, so members can see what those modifications or changes, proposed changes are. Uh, the next item is a special call meeting of March 26th of this year. What's the pleasures relate to those particular minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move to defer.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Move to second that those minutes, that the approval be deferred until our next board meeting? Unreadiness on the motion? If there be none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, the motion has been approved unanimously to defer those minutes until the next meeting. Um, at this time, we take this opportunity to welcome all visitors. Our meetings are open, as always, they are transparent. Just to remind the public who are listening and others to this meeting that this meeting is being recorded and that it will be posted on the city's website, and also links will be provided to local media for anyone who would like to go back and revisit this particular meeting. Any unfinished business at this time from anyone? Board members, or city attorney, any unfinished business?
Yes, I have a question, I, I have a question as exactly how, um, that was going to be handled, I think we talked about it a little bit, or maybe that was in our other meeting with the emergency management, would that come under unfinished, or you want me to do it in your report?
Uh, you can bring it up under my report, or you can bring it up during your report.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, any other proposed unfinished business? Hearing none, is there any county business at this time? Hearing none, I'll move on to department directors' reports. At this time, Mr. James Johnston with Community Development, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir, I do.
You may proceed.
Do we begin?
Yes, sir.
Uh, my report was given out to the mayor and board this past week. I do have a couple of minor changes, you know, two, nothing significant. Citywide water improvement project, staff is requesting a motion to approve the payment of the following invoices. Greenbrier invoice number three, twenty, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven eighty-two and fifteen cents. W G K invoice number four, nine nine two four, twenty-four thousand, five hundred. Total, two eighty-one, two eighty-two and fifteen cents. Note that this is the third payment from our contractor. The city's portion is only forty-one point three four eight five percent, and that when the funds arrive, I am requesting a motion to allow the city clerk to issue a check in the amount of one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents, that was a typo on your copy, to allow Met Water Works to receive the check and to pay the contractor. Again, one oh two, two sixteen and eighty-two cents.
Okay, you've heard the request from the Community Development Director to be able to pay the amount of one hundred and two thousand dollars, two hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents, correct, James?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Okay, Mr. Dillard offered the motion, it's been seconded by Alderman Davis, unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman, uh, Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It is unanimously approved, Mr. Johnston, your next item?
City of legal dump sites, project funded by D Q. The three selected legal dump site have been claimed by our contractor, G Rayburn Construction, and his invoice is on the docket. After requesting a motion to allow the mayor to find the release of claims and submit the documents to allow the city to be reimbursed.
You've heard the request, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Davis, and seconded by Alderwoman Irving, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's been approved unanimously, next item, Mr. Johnston?
Canal Street Emergency Road and Bridge Repair, funded by the municipal legislature during the 2019 session, and invoice from Key L L Street totaling two eighty-five, three fifty is on today's docket for payment. This is the initial and final construction invoice of this project across consulting engineer. Recall, the city had to pledge an additional six, two thousand, three fifty to award this contract, but due to an overestimation of quantities, cost came, came in below the contracted amount of three twelve, three fifty. With this, the city will only need thirty-five thousand, thirty-one dollars in additional funds to pay for this project. That's more of an FYI, could be invoiced with all the docket.
Okay, thank you, James. Uh, yes, Ms. Mathis?
I, I move the canal, street emergency road and bridge repair payment, uh, as, as described by Mr. Johnston.
Okay, there's a motion?
Second, I mean.
Second by Alderwoman Irving?
Yes.
Unreadiness?
Yes.
Yes, Alderwoman Irving?
No unreadiness, I second the motion, yes.
Okay, is there unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, who is this?
This is Dan Dillard, I just, I just had one question, these funds for this payment of this, and we now have the Community Development Director, what source are we going to be pulling these funds out of?
Uh, Mr. Johnston?
Are you meaning the initial funds received or the extra funds?
I'm talking about the extra funds to, at this point.
Um, I'm the city clerk, Mr. Dillard, but my assumption is coming out of the capital improvements money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, further unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote? Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote? Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote? Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote? Dustin, did we lose Alderwoman Irving?
I'm looking, Mayor, let me see.
While we're waiting on Alderwoman Irving, Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, we're checking on Alderwoman Irving to make sure we didn't lose her.
I don't, I don't see her there anymore.
Okay, she's there. Alderwoman Irving, you voted aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous, it's been approved. James, let's proceed.
2020 affordable housing program, a copy of the M O U between the Gertrude Young and the city was provided with your respective packets this past week. After requesting approval, I provided, um, M O A per affordable housing program requirement for the empowerment services for inclusion in the cities to H P applications. Note that this M O A will take effect if we are funded.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Mathis?
I move the memorandum of understanding between the Gertrude Young and the city of Natchez.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been seconded by Alderman Davis, unreadiness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimously approved, next item, Mr. Johnston?
Energy efficiency improvements, Snyder went to company. The following invoice was received after the docket led deadline. In addition to lost in demand, it is invoice number four totaling eighty-six thousand, one eighty-eight and seven, seventy cents. We do have the money in our account from home bank. And there will be one more invoice forthcoming.
Okay, you've heard the request to pay the invoice, do I hear a motion? Uh, yes, Alderwoman Smith?
It went out, I could, I did not hear that, and I don't see it on my sheet either, so please repeat that.
Again, my report was draft report, as it is the top, and this was another item added, of what was one more forthcoming.
Okay, this is Snyder, that's on the second page, Alderwoman Smith?
She doesn't have it, Mayor.
Oh, she doesn't, okay, and this is the invoice?
Last minute.
Okay, to pay invoice number four of the amount of eighty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents. That's eight six, comma, one eight eight dot, seven zero. So what is the pleasure?
So moved.
All right? It's been moved, Alderwoman Smith? Uh, yes, let's get it, let's get it stabilized by getting a second first, Ms. Irving. Is there a second? All right, second by Alderman Davis, now unreadiness, Ms. Irving?
I don't have any, it's just the sound is going in and out, and I can't hear. That information is being shared, I can't hear it. I don't know what's going on with the line, do I need to hang up and call back in, or?
Okay, can you hear me now, Alderwoman Irving?
Well, when Mr. Johnston was reading that information, I didn't hear any of it.
Okay, I think what my... Okay, I think what may have, might have happened is that there could have been individuals who are on this call whose phones were not muted, and that's why it's important for everyone, if you're not speaking, and I'm not talking to the board, but it includes the board, to put your phones on mute while someone is talking, that helps to cut back on any background noise. Therefore, everyone can hear, so.
I do know, aim is also pretty low, his speaking is kind of low, so maybe that would help, just come up a little bit.
Right, and James, you're going to have to improve your, your projection so that it can come across better. But Alderwoman Irving, the motion on the floor is to go ahead on and pay invoice number four for the energy efficient... for the energy efficient, efficiency improvements for Snyder Electric Company in the amount of $86,188.70. So is there unreadiness on the motion at this point? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote? Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimously approved. James?
I guess our one more item, this too is not on the report handed out this past week. Natchez Railroad has recently improved the program. After requesting a motion to allow the Natchez Railroad to issue a request for proposals to provide the design and construction services necessary to upgrade the automatic warning devices at nine locations in Adams, Franklin and Lawrence County.
Okay, you've heard the request for a motion to allow Natchez Rail to issue a request for proposal for providing design, construction services necessary to upgrade the automatic warning devices at nine locations in Adams, Franklin and Lawrence County. Do I hear a motion? So moved?
Mayor, I'm moved, second.
Okay, it has been moved by Alderman Davis and second by Alderwoman Mathis. Unreadiness on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment and it probably echoes something that was said earlier, but we are in trying times and we're trying to keep up with the business as best we can. And James, I know you have a hard time with some of these, but we got to either get them by email or in, you know, if papers before we, we get to this meeting because it's hard for us to be able to keep up with what we are doing if we don't see it. And, and I'm not arguing with you, James, or fussing at you, James, I'm just saying we just need, and Mr. Mayor, we definitely need copies of both of those last two to be sent out as soon as this meeting is over with so we can put them with these packets and have them and know what we did.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mathis.
Yeah, going along with this one is because it's already been approved by, we, we are, we are in a big thing with the federal government to get these railroads up and we want to get them up and running. So I'm, I'm for the project, I just want to be able to see what I'm doing and it's hard since we are not together where it can be passed out the day of the meeting. That's all I'm saying, thank you.
So noted. Further unreadness on the motion? If there be none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, James, it's unanimously approved.
Thank you, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Next, we have Chief Walter Armstrong.
Good morning, board. I want to talk to you about four areas of concern. One is about hazardous pay for first responders. The second one is re-implement our step raises that was put on hold over a year ago with the intentions of starting to back up in October of last year. The third one is the additional funding for our K-9. And then the fourth one is to make mention that we have six individuals who have passed the test in their agility and all the things that they need to do in order to go to the academy, which they are anticipating starting academy back up in the month of June. So I'll speak to you first about the hazardous pay. What I'm requesting from the board is to start paying first responders hazardous pay during this coronavirus epidemic. This is something that's being done across this nation and many parts of this state and I'm being told that there's a possibility of other officers starting to get that pay in, in the surrounding areas of Adams County. So I wanted to go ahead and go on record and asking for that, as you know, these officers are out there on the front line. They can't work from home, so they are subjected to this virus on each and every call they go on. One of the things I looked at is our budget. I have multiple openings inside the police department as far as law enforcement officers are concerned. I have 53.21% of my budget left, which I should have much less than that because we're into the seventh month. But due to all the openings, we have lots of money left to spread over the next five months. So again, there are a lot of sources out there from the federal government that these monies may be reimbursed back to agencies that pay our officers that's on the front line, or first responders, should I say, that's on the front line to go out and do the job that they are required to do during this COVID-19.
Okay.
One is. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead, Chief.
Well, I was about to say, the, the US Treasury Secretary Steven Mnuchin, he's going to be proposing a fourth stimulus bill, hopefully in the very near future. And he makes reference to first responders to be paid during that time. And he also mentioned that since this outbreak, several of the first responders have fallen victim through illness or death during this virus. Another source is possibly through some grants that's coming out of the pipeline. But nevertheless, as far as my budget is concerned, according to what's left, I have more than enough money to sustain this request throughout the rest of this budget year.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Frazier?
It's Alderman Frazier. Me and the chief have got together and we discussed this about hazardous duty pay. And me, myself personally, I think it's vital, it's vital to the police department to keep their spirits up and keep our people going. As he says, this is something that is transpired all over the country. And I feel if we got the money and it's not straight on the book, I think we need to go out and approve it. And I say, we talked about it, me and the chief, and he say, do you have the money in the budget? And we need to look into it and he need to give him his problem there and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Frazier. City Attorney, any comments on this?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a couple of comments, mainly because I called the state auditor's office this morning. I haven't seen it on the, on the agenda. And at the state auditor's office, I said that obviously the man board have the authority to make salaries, adjust salaries, give raises, so forth and so on. And keeping in mind.
Hey, hey Bob, hold on. Alderman Frazier, put your phone on mute. Okay, continuing, Bob.
So keeping in mind, the board has the authority to make adjustments. You still have to remain within the budget. Of course, the board will have to amend its budget, you know, to provide for these increases. And they suggested if you do it, obviously by incremental pay for this timeframe, whatever that timeframe may be, and it could, I guess, be adjusted over a period of time. But the board need to make a policy based on, you know, emergency situations such as this, the pandemic or other, I guess, emergencies as to what that would be. But whatever the additional pay is, it may be a little issue with the payroll because you, there won't be any purrs paid on this, this additional money. What do you call it, hazardous pay, whatever you want to call it. That money would just be paid with normal taxes taken out, but no contribution to purr. And I will say, I, I did ask if they had any information pertaining to any funds that would be available to local municipalities to reimburse for the first responders. And they said they, they're still staying that to determine exactly what may be available. That there's apparently some money that's been allocated to Mississippi that should filter down to the local governments. And I think there may be some priorities for first responders, but there's no definitive amount of money that, that has been allocated at this point. So whatever, whatever we're spending, you know, there's possibility to get something back, but there's no guarantee.
Okay, so are you seeing that? Hold up, Alderman Frazier, let me ask a question right quick to the attorney. So is it that the board needs to put something in place prior to approving it if it's a prerogative of the board or not? I just want to make sure I understand.
I think, I think the board could set the policy to today. I think however, it would probably be wise to look at the finances before you institute an amount of money to take this hazardous pay to try to determine what can be paid over a period of time and stay within the budget. Or stay within, you know, your, your entire budget. But if you're going to have to mitigate this pay, it certainly remain, you know, within your overall budget.
Okay, so basically, we need to provide the board with the proposed numbers so that they can take a look at them before it's approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, hold up, Alderwoman Mathis. Alderman Frazier had a question prior to you. Go ahead, Alderman Frazier.
Mr. Attorney, it seems to me that, you the attorney, could you get in touch with the, with the Jack and P and see how they're doing it? Their, their agency is much louder than ours, their budget is much larger now. So it seems to me that you need to get in touch with them about how they're doing it. And, 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 and like I said, this is, we understand that we have a pandemic and this virus is very sensitive country. But there, there have been a lot of, now it's going to be a lot of changes and a lot of ways we're doing things. So I think that you should look into it more deeply and find out which way that we can go. And that get with the chief and find out what he needs to. And, and also it's possible, the chief can help in doing it, he can call around to other agencies or to other states to find out how they're doing it.
I've already called around the state. I've already called around the state and spoke to several chiefs around the state that's implementing the hazardous pay. And basically was told that the board passed an emergency order allowing this to come forward as it relates to this pay.
Okay, Alderman Mathis?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm going to ask us to, and the attorney, I, I think we, we don't need to do this in pieces. I think that I, I agree that the police need it, they are first responders. I want to include in this the firefighters because we're going to turn right back around and have to do the same thing because they are first responders and they are out there. And then we got our public works people who are definitely out there or we wouldn't be able to keep any of this stuff going. And so I think that we need to look at what we can, what the parameters are, if, if, you know, how, how other areas are doing it for, you were saying first responders, well, we definitely know the police is first and we also know firefighters are first. So we, we, I think we're going to have to figure out a way, definitely for those two, and I'm, I'm including the public works people because they are out there keeping everything going, they're keeping all of our, um, everything going in the, in the process. So I think that we need to, to look at it and I know that the chief is asking for one group, but if we're going to, I mean, I don't want us to piecemeal it, if we got to look at it and adjust our budget and if there's any possibility of getting any money back from the federal government for all of these groups and we are saying, see them saying, yeah, we got to take care of these people. Can we do it in one package that we can do, you know, what, what we can do, look at our budget and see what the amount is, if it's time and a half or what constitutes hazardous pay? How will it affect the budget? And look at it for all of those people who are not working from home. They are actually working on the line outside and, and, and they are, they are in a habit position.
Okay, so, yes, Chief Armstrong?
Yes, of course, when I say first responders, we're certainly including fire and police. However, the city of Dixburg did in fact include public works because you're absolutely right. They're out there on the front line, they're doing what they're doing as well. So yes, I think they should be included as well.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't those three, hold up Alderman Frazier for one second? Why don't all three of those department directors, police, fire and public works, put the pencil on the paper to come up with what are the numbers? So that those numbers can be presented to the board. They also get with the city clerk to see, to target the money so that we will be able to underwrite this and, and get that packet back to the board ASAP and I can handle it in the form of a special call meeting if it's a prerogative of the board. Alderman Frazier?
First, I, I, just let me, I'm just going to say this, first I would just like to say, I apologize to the rest of the board. But me, as I explained to you earlier, myself and the chief, we talked about, we just didn't talk about the police department. We really talked about everybody and I failed to mention that. I am in total agreement with Alderwoman Mathis that we should be looking out for the police aside from the work. Most of, and I have a lot of respect for those guys in public work. They deserve, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are there any objections from the board that we give the charge to those three department directors and the city clerk to, to put the numbers on the paper so that they can get those numbers back to the board? And then when they're ready, I can let the board know we can have a special call in order to handle this hazardous pay issue. Any objections? Hearing none.
This is Dan.
Yes, Alderman Dillard, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to just add to that, that we use the resources and the experiences of our community redevelopment director to seek out and identify any and all available fund that could apply to the issue at hand.
Very good point. So, Mr. Johnston, your department, you are to work with both chiefs, public works director and the city clerk, so that we can collectively look at this and see what pots of money possibly exist out there on the state and federal levels that can help us to underwrite this hazardous pay. Okay, thank you, Alderman Dillard. If there's nothing else on that topic, yes, Alderwoman Irving?
I would like to say that I see that Clarkdale, Mississippi has adopted a policy too for public works fire and that we look at what they've done as well, just conclude them along with Dixburg.
Okay, thank you, Alderwoman Irving. Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Armstrong, your next request?
The next request, as I mentioned earlier, the step raises was put on hold a little over a year ago with the understanding that they'd be phased back in after one year, which was October of last year. So I'm asking, and, and of course, this is a smaller amount of money, these, these percentages that they get. I would, I would venture to say for a whole year would probably be less than $21,000 for all employees, sworn officers I'm speaking of. So again, just asking that the step raises be restarted as we agreed to.
Alderman Frazier, put your phone on mute, please. Okay, the request is to reinstitute the step raises for the police department, what's the prerogative of the board, do I hear a motion? What's the prerogative of the board, do I hear a motion?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that Alderman Mathis?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, it's been moved to second, unreadness on a motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
I, no, I was trying to get in to give you some information and I hit mute by mistake. Uh, can we also, I think at one time, weren't the firefighters getting step raises?
Uh, they, they're getting theirs currently.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure, I vote aye.
Okay. All right, Alderman Frazier? How do you vote? Alderman Smith, how do you vote? Alderman Smith, okay. Uh, Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, uh, step raises have been re-instituted back into the police department. Uh, next item is, uh, K nine funding. Uh, basically the chief has, uh, raised over six thousand dollars from the community, uh, for a second K nine in his department. I think he has a request, is the amount of like eleven or twelve thousand that's needed, chief?
Yes, uh, the amount to complete, uh, the amount that we've already raised will be around eleven thousand and five hundred dollars. Uh, the money that we raised, uh, has been at a standstill for over eight months. Uh, nothing has been added and I'm afraid that it probably won't be. And as we move towards the end of this administration, I'm afraid that that money is going to lay dormant and, and we're not going to get any more. So what I'm
Okay, uh, the, the funding, you have the money in your budget, uh, forty eleven thousand five hundred, correct? Okay, uh, you for the request, do I hear a motion? Alderman Frazier, do I hear a motion? Is there a second?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Dillard, unreadness? Hearing none Alderman Mathis. Oh, yes, uh, Alderman Smith, unreadness?
Yeah, I, I, no, I'm, I'm having trouble, my phone's not doing right and I did not hear the full motion, please repeat it, thank you.
Okay, uh, the motion is to allow the, uh, police department, and they have the money in their budget, to pay, uh, the residual amount needed, uh, to pay for a K nine officer. Uh, they've raised over six thousand dollars, uh, he's going to use eleven thousand five hundred dollars from his, uh, budget in order to pay the balance that's needed for a K nine. Uh, and that's what the motion is to allow the purchase of the K nine. Uh, and it was moved by, uh, Alderman Frazier and seconded by Alderman Dillard. Uh, we're under unreadness, is there further unreadness? Hearing none Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, uh, it's been approved unanimously, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item is, uh, pending employment. Uh, the chief is requesting, uh, to allow him to go ahead on and employ, uh, additional officers, and I think the number is six in his, uh, department.
Correct.
The academy will be ready, uh, to take them in for training purposes in June. Uh, what is the prerogative of the board on this request? Do I hear a motion to allow him to, uh, commence that process? Who is that? Okay, Alderman Frazier. It, it, it was moved by Alderman Frazier, uh, seconded by Alderman Davis to allow, uh, the chief to go ahead on and commence, uh, the employment process of the six, uh, potential officers for his department. Uh, unreadness on a motion. If there be none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, chief, that's all you have, it's been approved unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, any other department directors, um, out there?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mr. Johnson, Public Works.
Yes, Mr. Dollar, yes.
Yes, sir, I had a question in regards to, uh, what the chief was speaking about in, in pending employments. Um, currently right now, we are, we, we, you know, we do have some, uh, staff openings. And I know we've been holding off, you know, due to the virus. Uh, is that something that we can open up those jobs to become available, to start looking at applicants during this time? Are we still in the process of holding off until we get, you know, past this pandemic?
Um, what, what positions do you have vacant, uh, Mr. Dollar?
Uh, we've got several, we've got, uh, mechanic positioned, um, we've got a, um, uh, we've got some two different labor positions, um, a supervisor position. We, we've got about four positions open, uh, currently, uh, operator position.
Okay, uh, just let me give the board a little background information on this. Uh, a little over a month ago, I had requested, uh, for department directors, uh, to, uh, be, uh, uh, frugal in their departments because of the pandemic. Uh, because, you know, I wasn't sure of how we were going to be impact as it relate to revenues coming into the city. And, uh, that's why many of these department directors, uh, have been holding off on, uh, employment of, uh, of, of employees in their department and, and that was the basis for it. So, uh, Mr. Dollar from Public Works is posing a question to the board. Uh, I guess seeking permission to go ahead on, uh, if it's a prerogative of the board to allow him to, uh, advertise those vacancies that he have in his department.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Alderman Smith.
I guess I'm, I'm, you know, everything that I hear us doing today is spending more. You know, I'm reading about cities all over the country that are already laying off people and cutting because they're not going to have the revenue and the sales tax. I'm so hesitant, I'm hesitant about everything right now and I feel like we need to have a special call meeting to really look. We need to start anticipating what kind of loss we're going to have and see how we're going to be able to handle this. I'm really, really concerned. Um, I wish we could hold off on anything else right now on this kind of spending. And Justin, I want you to be able to hire, I mean, it has nothing to do with not wanting all the departments, but I'm, I'm just, I think that we need a special call meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, Ms. Mathis.
I, I, I agree with, with, with what Ms. Smith, uh, Alderman Smith is saying. However, I do, when we have a special call meeting, I would like for Justin to have his numbers in and what kind of money he's talking about and what he thinks will be left in his budget. Because we do have to remember, a budget is only a, 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 an approximation on paper. The budget doesn't come in to, to sustain the budget that we created, which was an approximation based on what we normally would be getting in. Then we're going to have to cut back, so I agree. But when we have that call meeting, we need to have the information about the department, what his request is, so that we can, we might do one or two or we might not be able to do any, but we need to have that information. I agree and I agree for the special call meeting, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I, I
Yes, Alderman Irving.
I was going to say too, I do agree, but I also want the, um, Mr. Dollar to have those numbers. But he had spoken with me and shared some information about the continued services so that we can better serve our citizens. And so we do need to take that into consideration and whether or not this money is in his budget. So I would like to see a special call meeting take place as well so that we can get further information on it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dollar.
Yes, sir, Mayor, I, I just would like to clarify that these positions that I'm speaking of, of course, are, are not new positions. These are positions that were included in our budget. Uh, they're our normal staff numbers that we normally have. These are, these are not any new requests or anything of that nature. This is, you know, strictly our, uh, normal staff that's been budgeted for the year.
Uh, yes, and, uh, all members of the board, I think, recognize that these numbers are in the budget. But the thing that, you know, we are taking into consideration is that, uh, we may have a major loss of revenues, uh, that's, that's coming into the city as a result of this pandemic. So that's why we really need to, uh, to kind of look at the numbers and see how the revenue streams are coming in, uh, currently. And that's why the board is requesting a little time and maybe a special call to look at these numbers. So maybe this is one of the items that we can add to the special call when we deal with the hazardous pay issue, uh, Mr. Dollar.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other department directors out there that need to, uh, report to the board?
Mayor, this is Sabrina Bartley with the Senior Center in Natchez Transit, I, I have an information report, please.
Uh, yes ma'am, go ahead.
Thank you, to the mayor and the board, good morning. I have, uh, I'd just like to share some information. I was listening and I heard, um, and I want to also applaud the police department and the fire department and public works for keeping things going. But I'd like to, as the director of Natchez Senior Center and Natchez Transit System, to, uh, share a little information about our department as we are responsible for keeping people, uh, moving in the city. The first thing I'd like to do is, is simply share on behalf of the Natchez Transit System. Natchez Transit System at about four thirty every morning, we have drivers who are coming in, who are taking their temperature, masking up, gloving up, disinfecting and retrieving their tablets and heading to homes all across this area to pick up passengers, to transport them to essential destinations. Places of employment, places that are essential for their life, like therapy to the doctor's office, to dialysis, to chemo and, and other destinations such as that. There are, there are also call center employees who are taking reservations twenty-four hours in advance so that we can make certain that as our, um, drivers and vehicle operators are out there early morning to late afternoon, um, doing things that we don't even think about as, as it relates to, uh, transporting people and things. There, they are also setting these up so that it's not more than two or three people on a vehicle at one time and that the driver has time to do what they need to do between passengers. And so I want to take an opportunity to share with the board and just extend my thanks and appreciation to this awesome staff that we have at Natchez Transit System. Secondly, I'd like to also just share with you, oh, oh, what, what do the numbers look like? Then it tallies out to, we are a little bit down, we are quite down. Where it used to be, uh, two hundred trips per day are down to about a hundred ten, uh, eighty, ninety. But those are people who have to go, who do not have any other way to get to their chemo or their dialysis. And I'm just grateful, I just wanted to share that, that little bit with you. The second thing is, the Natchez Senior Center has been extremely busy. The Natchez Senior Center and, uh, its employees and staff, uh, and, uh, volunteers also are delivering over eight hundred, over one thousand and one hundred meals per week to persons who are at their homes. That number is one thousand, one hundred meals per week to homes, to households. Along those same lines, we have persons who are calling, um, and checking on seniors every day and reminding them to practice safe distancing and practice, um, uh, educating them on, on making certain that they are disinfecting and that they are washing, washing things down and being careful about who comes into their presence. There, who are taking the, uh, information from them to find out if they need some milk and eggs. And then in turn, uh, twice a week, we are going and we are for them and doing their shopping for them and delivering those things back to their doorstep. We are masked up, we are gloved up, we are disinfecting, we got Lysol, there's perfume now, but we're doing those things that we have to do. And I'd like to share that with the board, I'd like to also commend the staff of the Natchez Senior Center for the awesome work that they are doing. Because these two departments are the departments that, uh, wrap their arms around the community on behalf of the city of Natchez and give them a hug, uh, and really now a virtual hug. But we are still, uh, doing those things that we need to do and I ju- I wanted to share that with you. I do have one concern that I have found and I'd also like to share this with the board as well. As I look and as I hear and talk to people, I, and as I listened to this morning, I heard the mayor mention in his, uh, that we were going to have a silent prayer for those persons that had been lost to COVID nineteen. It is so important that we re- we consider sheltering in place and social distancing. We, too often, what I am seeing is a lax in people who are practicing social distancing. Why am I concerned about it? Ever since I became director of the Natchez Senior Center in January the fourth of two thousand, I have always had the senior population in the forefront of my mind. How we can enhance their life, what we can do better, how we can keep them safe, how we can make things, uh, a bet, make every day a better day for them, for the, the elderly and, and the frail and others. And as I now continue to have birthdays, I'm remembering and being reminded even more of how important that is. And I'm almost to the end of my report, Mayor. And this, and so if you just give me just a couple more minutes, this thing is really bothering me a lot. We as, uh, I am seeing that we are exposing our seniors to too many celebration of life occurrences that we could find a better way to do. Birthdays, weddings, funerals, house parties and all of these things where people are gathering and are not really adhering to social distancing and keeping things at a minimum. I think that it, I think that, that somehow, now my staff, we have tried to, to educate and say, please don't do this. But I need your help in helping me to encourage others that let's find a different way of doing what we're doing. Let me give you a clear example of one thing that happened over the last couple of weeks that has bothered me more than anything. In a county, in, uh, from one of my colleagues in North, Northwest Mississippi, the northern, inner county there, there was a funeral. And that funeral had, it was a, a, a celebration that had over two hundred people at that funeral. It was graveside. It was not a graveside service, it became a graveside funeral. Complete with a choir, complete with an organist, complete with people that had traveled from all parts of everywhere to come for this celebration. Today, as I speak to you on this day, we know of, at, of, we know of one death that they have attributed to someone who was infected but asymptomatic that was at that funeral. There are seven other individuals that they know of that they have, uh, believed to be linked back to that who have, who are now COVID, who are now positive for COVID nineteen. There is one person who have died, one who is in intensive care right now in the hospital in, uh, in Memphis, Tennessee. Came into that community and left. People from everywhere and we, and, and, and we don't know who or what is, or, or what or who has anything. That's just from the people who called and said, you know, uh, friend so-and-so has this and did you hear about this? It con- it concerns me about the Natchez community because I have a father that's eighty-three years old and I have other family members and we, and I don't want them to get sick. I'm not sick, but I don't want to transport anything to them. And so I'm concerned about the senior population in, in Natchez and Adams County. And I'm asking, I'm asking you as the, um, the director of the Natchez Senior Center to help me by to help me by when you talk to your constituents, please ask them to, to refrain just a, ad- adhere to not having a lot of people around and gathering a lot right now, uh, so that we don't have to begin to experience what is being experienced in other places. I am concerned. I'm also concerned because there is a lot of misinformation out there concerning certain things like life events. How many people, so if you have a wedding outside, how many people can you have? And, and, and if you have graveside service, how many people can you have? Some people will say ten, some say, well, it really don't matter because they're all outside, some would say, oh, it can be fifty, and all of that. And, and when it all boils down to we are putting people's lives in our hands. So, my, my request to you is to, when you talk to people, because you will talk to people that I do not see, would you would ask them, please, practice social distancing. Please, practice sheltering in place. Please ask them to use their mask. Please ask them to wash their hands and disinfect a- 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 and refrain from gathering of anything above ten people. Please ask them that when they get invited to birthday parties and weddings and funerals and house parties, that they will, uh, ask the people if they could do it virtual for them. Just, just link them in virtually because, uh, these conditions won't last. They won't last forever, but we do want our friends and our families to be around so that we can share with them next year, this time when we can have a party and, and celebration, and in a few months, we want them to be around. That's just my request and that's just my plea, and I know that might not be part of my report or what I typically do, but I'm concerned about what I'm seeing with the seniors in the population in this community and the carelessness and the, and the disobedience of other individuals who are in their circle. That's my report. Thank you for allowing me to share that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Bartley, and, uh, well said, and I want to thank you because when this pandemic was first on the verge of affecting us here, uh, you and I, uh, had a long talk as it relates to your department, and you were extremely proactive from the very beginning, along with many other department directors. So, um, Mrs. Bartley, thank you, and to all of the department directors, uh, thank you for your diligence and your dedication and each of you being proactive dur- throughout this entire process. Uh, everyone, uh, as a department director, um, did an excellent job of being proactive throughout this entire process, and Ms. Bartley, again, thank you. That was well said this morning, and, uh, I think we all needed to hear that. Uh, thanks and God bless you. Uh, any other department directors? If not, we're gonna move on to, uh, city official reports. Uh, we'll start with you, Alderman Mathis.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I don't ha- I wanna, I don't have a report, but I do want to thank all of the department heads and all of the employees of the city. They're working hard at, in light of what Ms. Barton said. I think that when we have this, uh, special call, we need to look at everybody who's going out because we didn't include her transit people and, and the folks that are working with the senior citizens. So, I think we need to include, uh, rep- a re- report from her on what her needs are. I don't know what we're doing in hazardous pay in other places, but if they are picking up people, they're in the public, and we, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to do something about that. So, I want to include them on, matter of fact, I guess I just want to say, whatever department that are not working from home, uh, and have exposure, I would like to see that we, when we do have this meeting, that we, uh, include them. And, and the other thing that I have, uh, in my report that I asked earlier, and you said I could include in mine, I, I want to make sure that, um, I want to know how we are handling from the city clerk, when she makes her report, the absentee balancing process, because I've heard two things. One on, uh, wh- the emails that we got out, there was a list of how everything would be handled by each department, and one of the things that was said was that citizens should call in and request absentee ballots, and one would be mailed to them, and then that that were formed in the lobby at City Hall. Then I heard that City Hall basically was, I don't know whether it's open now or not, but people are just, they have to call before they can come in. So, I want to know how are, are these ballots available for people to walk in and get, or how they're gonna be handled. I think that needs to be, and I would like to have something, um, emailed to me because I am, I, I was on those other calls, and I know that's what was stated in, something was a little different stating in the emergency management meeting, and so I want to make sure we getting the, everybody's saying the same thing. So, I want to know how those ballots are gonna be handled, uh, and if people are going on, because I know, I think we within forty-five days if, uh, of, of, of the election. So, I just want to know how that's gonna be handled. Thank you. That ends my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mathis, and I'll get the, uh, city clerk, uh, to respond to that when we get to the city clerk's, uh, report here today, and also the city attorney, uh, can also help with that, uh, discussion. Uh, thank you, Ms. Mathis. Uh, Alderman Frazier.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have a report, but I would like to say, uh, uh, I thank you all for calling me to come in and get those signs and stay at home time, and I, and it was a pleasure, an honor for me to, to put them out in the, in the neighborhoods and stuff. Uh, I would, first, I would like to say that, uh, I was very disturbed this morning. My daughter came in and, and, and then said, did you see this, uh, video? I said, what are you talking about? She showed me, uh, a video whereby they was having an Easter party in Pensacola, Florida, African-American. This, this disease is, is, is a killer to, not, it's a killer to everyone, but really it's, it's more detrimental to, to the African-American community. And it seems, it seemed though to me that we have not really taken this serious. And, but like I say, it becomes to me, the people in, in my ward and all over my ward, that I, I put those signs out to let people know. It is, it is very important that you stay at home, and we are not taking it seriously. Uh, so, like I say, I want to say again, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and whoever, whoever idea it was to put those signs out in the community, it was a great idea to do that. Uh, and like I say, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one more thing I, I, I li- I would like to say, uh, to, to the board, uh, we've been doing a good job in what we're doing and, and trying to get our people to stay at home, and so, I would like to thank you again, Mr. Mayor, for what you've done.
Uh, thank you, uh, Alderman Frazier. I really appreciate that, and to just give you a little brief background on what, I'm sorry.
Mayor, there's one more thing I would like to say.
Go ahead.
I've been on this, I've been on this board, uh, almost four years, and on the four years that I've been on this board, I have never, never, never heard Ms. Barton talk so long and so diligently about this coronavirus and dealing with elderly, and I think she did an excellent job, and like I say, it was, it was real, the first to hear them up because like I say, she's a woman of very, very powerful words, and I would love to say again, thank you, Ms. Barton, for what you're doing in the community.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Alderman Frazier, and, uh, I agree with you. Ms. Bartley did an excellent job of, uh, expressing her concerns as a result of this pandemic. But just to kind of give you a little brief background on how we came about with the yard sign campaign, uh, which is a grassroots effort, is that I formed a, a mayor's coalition of the greater missle area, uh, the mayor of Farady, the mayor of Vidalia, the mayor of Woodville, the mayor of Bu, the mayor of Roxy, the mayor of Meadville, the mayor of Fayette, and the mayor of, uh, of, uh, of Port Gibson, and we've been meeting every week, having virtual meetings, because what, what impacts Natchez impact us surrounding areas and vice versa. What, what goes on in Vidalia or Farady or Fayette, or over in the Franklin County, uh, towns, they impact us here. So, we, we started, uh, having this meeting of the mayor's coalition. As a matter of fact, I had one this morning at nine o'clock, and one of the things from the very first meeting that we had was that the mayor of, uh, Port Gibson shared this idea of, uh, and his name is Mayor White, he, uh, was starting a yard sign campaign to talk about reducing, uh, the curve, uh, or preventing the curve from occurring. So, uh, I took that idea and, and, and shared it with the task force here in Natchez, and, uh, we came up with a simple sign that says, stay home corona, uh, I'm sorry, uh, COVID nineteen kills. And we figured that it would be a good grassroots effort of, uh, spreading the word, and, uh, thanks to the members of the board of Alderman, members of the task force and department directors, especially the police department, for putting the signs out. And I have to be honest, I think it has had a tremendous positive impact on this entire community. And, uh, we had several banks, uh, that provided us with funding to help to underwrite parts of it, United Mississippi Bank, Concordia Bank, and just recently, uh, Tensaw Bank, I think it's called Tensaw Bank, or Delta Bank, uh, it is Delta Bank. Uh, they provided us with donations to help us to underwrite the signs. So, uh, yes, and Alderman Frazier, when I called you about your ward, it was without hesitation, without reservation, you came down to the convention center, and I think you picked up seventy-five signs to put out in your ward, along with several other Aldermen, uh, on the board, uh, that worked diligently in doing that. So, yes, uh, that's some background information. Thank you, Alderman Frazier. Alderman Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, yes, I want to commend Ms. Bartley about everything that she said because it's absolutely correct, and, and, um, and our task force, we have addressed this, and one of the things that we did talk about, just so everybody knows, um, is reaching the communities and specifically the African-American community because it has hit the African-American community so hard all over the United States, and, um, doing some public service announcements, and I, I did call Calvin Butler at, um, DTYJ, and he is absolutely on board with putting some out, and then, um, UMB, we're gonna do the same thing on, on both, um, his radio station as well as, um, um, Natchez First Radio Group as well, um, some public service announcements, uh, advertising type things too. And, um, we've also talked about putting out some information to the funeral homes on the task force as well, and then getting maybe some articles in the newspapers. So, I think that, um, you'll see more and more, um, efforts to reach people and just really hammer this, this home to everyone. So, um, thanks, thanks to all of y'all for your efforts.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Uh, Alderman Irving?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to share, um, that I did have a concern about the absentee ballot as well, and how they're going to be handled, which you're going to address it. But I also wanted to share, I'm encouraged by the mayor and the task force committee for providing information to the public about the COVID nineteen stay-home ordinance. I also, um, participated, um, in the meeting on Monday, um, about information that Sarah Carter Smith just, um, shared with us about how hard our black community has been hit with the COVID nineteen virus. And, um, I share with members of the task force and you as well, Mayor, that, uh, one of the suggestions that the mayor and the task force committee could do was create a letter, have that letter mailed to every member of the community, um, um, emphasizing the importance of staying at home and how this virus truly affected the community. And that's all that I have at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Irving, and Alderman Irving and I talked on yesterday, uh, about this, uh, because she was on the call for the task force meeting on Monday morning. Um, and one of the things that she pointed out to me is that a lot of our seniors, and not just seniors, but other individuals out there, don't have access to the technology, uh, that is available. And, uh, if we could put something in writing, uh, to, to send out to our, uh, citizens in this community to recapitulate, um, you know, the methodologies, the procedures, and the importance of social distancing and, and stay home, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, I agree with her, and that's something that, uh, we'll be addressing with the task force and see if we can't, uh, achieve that, to get something out in writing so that, uh, especially our seniors can have something that they can read and understand, uh, the importance of why we are doing what we're doing. So, thank you, Alderman Irving.
You're welcome. Thank you again.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Alderman Davis.
Uh, Mayor, I received a lot of calls from the people in my ward, and they, they are happy with, uh, the way the city is handling the approach to the COVID nineteen virus, and also, uh, I applaud the nurses, doctors, and the first responders on the job they're doing. And that's about it, Mayor, and my report.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Davis, and also, uh, members of the board, let's keep Alderman Davis in our prayers and in our thoughts. Uh, he lost his father, uh, a little over a week ago, and they had a, uh, private graveside service for their father, and, uh, Alderman Davis, um, you have all condolences, uh, on the passing of your father.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Uh, proceeding on to, uh, Alderman Dillard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I concur with everything that, uh, the Alderman and the mayor and, uh, the department head just said, uh, and but I, I do want to shift gears a little bit, and I think, uh, Alderwoman Smith was pointing on, uh, about, uh, the city and our financials. Uh, we, we're at a point where we have to weigh out what we know and what we don't know, and I believe that the special call meeting is gonna be critical for the city moving forward. We know, without having seen the numbers, that our sales dollars are going to be down. We know, without seeing the fact that the money that we receive, the casinos that are generated off of their revenues are going to be low. We know that we're going to have to revise our budget in response to the consequences that this pandemic has brought upon, uh, the city of Natchez. It's going to, uh, be some hard decisions, and we're gonna have to, uh, use each department to help us drill down in here, that we're gonna be in a mode for, I believe, sometime to come. I hope that I'm wrong, but I believe the shadow of this pandemic is gonna have obviously adverse effects on our revenues coming in, and I believe it, it may be looking at, uh, you know, two to three, uh, maybe four months before we start to see those funds recover. It is our responsibility as the governing authorities of the city of Natchez and with the mayor to look at any and all avenues that we can to mitigate, uh, the, the upcoming, uh, responsibilities that we're gonna have. I would like to say one other thing, Mr. Mayor, is that as the, the chief of police kind of alluded to, there is information that will start to come out from the federal government in response to the effects of this, uh, pandemic. And I would like the city to use, and in particular, we need to use our community development director as our grant writer to assist and apply all resources necessary to seeking out and identifying any and all resources that would be available to the city of Natchez under these circumstances. Um, there's much more that we can talk about. I believe it will come up in the special call meeting when that's scheduled, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to conclude on that note. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Dillard, and also, just, uh, on that note, I just want to inform the board that, uh, the charge is given, been given to all department directors, that any spending that has been done as it relates to this pandemic, um, we are keeping track of that. We have a, um, a person in the city, uh, that has been identified to keep all documentation and copies sent to the, the city clerk along with, uh, the community development director, uh, so that we can have a complete paper trail to make sure that we, uh, uh, document all spending as it relates to the pandemic, uh, so that we can seek, uh, reimbursement, uh, for the, that spending. So, I just want the board to know that as a re- uh, result of, uh, Mr. Dillard's report. Okay, so, we're moving on to, uh, the, yes, uh, Alderman Mathis.
Along with what Mr. Dillard said and what you said, I would encourage all of the department heads to be listening out because along with Jane, uh, they may get, for instance, Ms. Barton, she might get some type of information that just passes across from her that, that needs to be filtered in when, when all these, when these funds begin to be, uh, developed from the federal government and, and, and sent down to the state government. We, you know, all department heads need to be looking at anything that comes across their screens that could be. that could be considered a, a grant or, or a way to apply for, for money, even if it's loans. We may not want to get into that, but we need to, we need to know it. So I, I want James to coordinate that. I want him to find everything he can find, but we need everybody looking at the same time. And, and also, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if with what Ms. Ms. Barton has shared with us, if she might not need to be on that emergency management call too. But that's up to you and just, you know, think about that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the, uh, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask the board to approve the claims docket.
Okay, uh, you've heard the request from the city clerk for the approval of the claims docket. Do I hear a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Davis. Uh, unreadness on the motion? Hearing none. Uh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Dillard.
If the city clerk can look at the, uh, claims docket, uh, under the item of Fund 177, that would be the Natchez Adams County, as it's listed, the EDA in the amount of $16,652.01. Uh, my question is, does that represent a monthly payment or a bi-, uh, a two-month payment? Can, can the city clerk give us some clarification on what that amount represents?
Or what page are you on, Mr. Dillard?
Uh, it is the-
Are you on the mini docket? On the mini docket?
It should be the, uh, it should be the claims docket, uh, Ms. Fortenberry.
Fifty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
I don't have a fifty craving. Fifty-seven.
That's page.
Fifty-seven, five-seven.
It says Avalon Tax, so looking from the, uh, Avalon Tax, Mr. Dillard, it says Avalon Tax is on there. Come every month, there's a proceeding going through them from the Avalon Tax from the county.
Yeah, so, um, the question, uh, Mr. Dillard, he's asking why the amount of $16,000 to Natchez Inc. and it should actually be approximately $8,000, uh, a month.
Not if, not if the tax was more than based on the taxes we've seen there. That was our big check, remember, in March?
Yeah, yeah, but I, but we should, we should be paying approximately $8,000 a month to Natchez Inc. Uh, so Mr. Dillard's question is, why is it $16,000?
I will look at it, but it's never the same every month. It's based on a percentage and the check was really large.
No, no, actually, no, there should be a specific amount, uh, that is provided to Natchez Inc. And it should be at the tune of about $100,000 a year. That is our allocation to Natchez Inc.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would recommend, uh, to the board that we amend the motion to exclude that payment until research can be done to make sure that we're not making an open, overpayment to Natchez Inc.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved by Alderwoman Smith and it's second by Alderwoman Mathis, that we amend the main motion to exclude the payment to Natchez Inc. What is that claim number? Does anyone know?
Um, the claim number is-
Sixty-nine.
Oh, I think it's 177558934.
Okay, that claim, okay, that should be-
That's what, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Dillard?
That's actually the account number. Now, as it's being presented to us in this claims docket, it refers to check number sixty-nine. I will say, Mr. Mayor, I also have a similar question about the library fund. What, what I'm trying to determine is, is that are these payments, are they equally divided out over the months? Or how are we determining what these payments are? My, my concern is-
Mr. Dillard, we're down by 12 bucks.
Yeah, but if there's-
There's no way it can be 12 because 16 times 12 is more than $100,000.
It won't be 16 every month, Mr. Dillard. We'll get you a spreadsheet of all the payments so you can see that equals out for the whole year. It's not going to be 16 every month. We just got a big check in March. So next month, they may get 200,000. Then they only get, they only may get 6,000. It just equals out at the end of the year to the total amount. But we'll get you a spreadsheet and you can see those monthly payments. But you know, the year used to be out for the mo-, for the year payment. It's always based on whatever the Avalon Tax is, precision of Avalon Tax.
Okay.
Big check.
So, all right, so our concern here, uh, Ms. Fortenberry, is that we, uh, we hold off on the payment, uh, to Natchez Inc. because we want to make sure that we're not making any over, overpayments. So we want to make sure that we research that, um, and if it's a prerogative, I don't know if Mr. Dillard wants to include the library or not, but I know the library is based on a millage, uh, that they, they, they only supposedly receive a, a, a certain millage every fiscal year. Uh, but as far as Natchez Inc., we want to make sure that we don't overpay them because I think possibly in the past, it could have been an overpayment. But I, I, I know that there was supposed to have been some research done on it and I don't know if it's been, uh, concluded or not. But the motion at hand is to amend the main motion to exclude that claim of Natchez Inc. Of the $16,000, to hold that until research is done to make sure it's not an overpayment. Father unreadness on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, is it possible to include the Armstrong Library too? Because that's 52,000 and, and that, that comes out way over what they're supposed to get by, by millage. Both of those are by mill.
Right. So, wh- why don't we do this, Ms. Mathis, so that we kind of keep it, uh, from being, uh, uh, entangled in terms of motion? Let's deal with the motion to amend it, uh, for Natchez Inc. And then let's come back with another motion to amend it to hold the payment for the library to make sure that we research it. So let's handle one amendment at a time. Is that okay?
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Unreadness on the amendment to exclude the Natchez Inc. payment from the docket? If not, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
And now, it, it passed unanimously, uh, to amend the main motion to exclude the Natchez Inc. payment? Uh, do I hear a motion to amend the motion to exclude the library payment until we can research it?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a second? Moved by Alderwoman Mathis, second by Alderman Davis. Uh, readiness on the amendment? If there be none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman, uh, Frazier?
Uh.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, uh, Alderman, uh, Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
I would stipulation that we're just getting more information on it. We are going to make our payments and commitments to both of these, but we, we're just getting more information. Thank you.
Okay, and that's a vote of aye, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's unanimous that we hold off on, uh, the payment of the library based on that amendment. So the main motion has been amended to approve the docket excluding the payments of Natchez Inc. and the library. Um, father unreadness on the motion? If there be none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote on the docket?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier? How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
The docket has been approved, uh, excluding those two payments, uh, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask the board to approve the mini docket.
Okay, you've heard the request for the approval of the mini docket. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Alderman Frazier and second by Alderman Davis. Uh, unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, how do you vote, Alderwoman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith? Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Um, aye, Mr. Mayor, but I do want to say this as well. In the past, I have not voted on the docket nor the small claims because it does include my payroll along with my family member. So I want it, for the record, you know, that I'm clear of it. I'm not in objective of the budget or the claim docket.
Okay, so noted. Thank you. Okay. Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, it's, uh, unanimous, uh, noting, uh, Alderwoman Irving's, uh, lack of participation on the docket, uh, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh- Uh, Alder, uh, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. I asked the board to approve an agreement with Springbrook for data fix and mail execution in China in the amount of $4,056.
Okay, um, do you want to explain a little bit more, uh, before you request the motion? Before I request the motion?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir. We've been here processing, trying to reconcile our bank statements and, um, come to find out they had not been put into Springbrook, um, since about 2015, 16. And so she would go in, enter that data into Springbrook, uh, so that way we have a beginning balance for each, each year. And then she'll train us how to continue to keep it up in Springbrook so we can get, uh, get our data done, texted out of Springbrook and not from the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, uh, you've heard the request. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Dillard.
So if I, understanding this, the $4,056, that is to take the information from 2016 fiscal year and enter it into the Springbrook system, correct?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve, uh, that agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved by Alderman Dillard, second by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion? If there be none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote? I'm sorry, go ahead. Who is that?
Felicia Irving. I just wanted to ask-
Okay, go ahead.
With the training, everyone in the city clerk office will be trained with access to, um, place entry into the Springbrook once the training has occurred. Yes, ma'am, everybody, it's a remote training, uh, Ms. Irving, so it'll be remotely, yes, ma'am. All right, thank you.
Okay. If there are no father, if there's no father unreadness, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderwoman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And how do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, uh, it's approved. All right, uh, city clerk, if you would, uh, respond now to Alderwoman, uh, Mathis and Alderwoman Irving's concern as it relates to the absentee balloting process, please.
Yes, sir. Um, Ms. Mathis, when I first sent out my, um, duty to my office, it was prior to the office closing. So we were taking walk-ins, but since it's closed, I've gotten the dusting and it's online and I've been getting calls, um, the instant before the pandemic, I may have been getting maybe seven to 10 people. We come in, I'm getting seven since yesterday, so actually it has increased. We've gotten more requests and we're getting those, getting those in the mail as soon as we can. I've even gotten online requests, but they're calling me, they're emailing me, um, and they're, um, I'm not, and they call me on the phone. So we are getting the ballot and information out there, um. Let's see, and in the 45 days, we never stopped. Um, even when they, when you guys changed the date to the 12th, it was more than 45 days. We never stopped accepting, um, absentee, we, we continued the whole time expecting. Um, and if I'm in the building and someone comes up, I definitely would get them an application, go ahead and get in the mail. So I've gotten a few when I'm at the office. And Denise, myself, and Rebecca, the only ones actually going to vote because the ballots are accounted and got to be accounted for. And so everybody can't go in there to, um, get the ballot by the, by the vote. And so three of us have been handling of, um, getting those in the mail for people. And, um, it's going, I think it's going pretty well. Uh, we talked to the Secretary of State Office, the National Attorney General's Office, Wiltshire, about later. And they kind of helped us come up with a, um, process to keep on doing absentee ballots during the pandemic. And the good thing about them doing this way, because when they come in, they come in, give us AID, let them go vote, a lot of context, and then they let them notify their, um, ballots. But if you mail the ballot out under this, under this COVID-19, the person who's able, actually gets the ballot and has a witness behind them going up down a notary. So anybody's being treated as a temporary disabled voter, which allows them to get a second signature and not have to go outside their house to find a notary. So how actually got more participation if you've been doing this way? Um, I don't know if I have any questions, um, given, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh-
I have one question.
Go ahead, Ms. Mathis.
Okay, first of all, what telephone number do they use to call in, uh, for a ballot?
The first, it's me, I'm the only person, they, they send it to me, Ms. Mathis, and I'll, I'll, I mean, I'll feel it's not, it's Denise or Rebecca, but he comes, all calls come to me and all emails come to me.
So I'm saying, they call 601-445-7500 and then press two for the city clerk's office? Or do they call your, your- Say it again?
My, my office phone is calling to my cell phone. So they call the office, it's going to come to my cell and then my cell number is listed on the door and this was on the website and it's out there. So the, the 601-445-75, um, 07, that, that's going to come to me. It's going to ring, it'll ring to my cell phone. And the number on the door is the 601-446-2425. It comes to my cell phone. That's all I'll call. My cell, it comes to my cell.
Okay, and then the last one is, what about senior, so senior citizens who have no emails? They need to use this phone number to, to get that, to get their absentee ballots, right?
Yes, and they have because they, they started like around the end of March or the first week of April, which is really close to the election date. So a lot of my seniors, I, um, the county gave me, uh, for me, probably about 50 of my primary disabled that I sent, I sent out right away. And so by the time we got into the pandemic, a lot of it already voted. Like this April does give a year. The ones who are getting out, the ones who just can't come out because of the COVID-19 that I'm really getting. But most of the things that are already pretty much voted before we got, you know, before we closed the city because we were right at the election date, you know, when we closed. They're, we're at the original, original election. Yes, ma'am.
We'll, we'll make sure that the seniors know that the, that these numbers are out there because we just want to make sure that all people are able to vote and that they get the information. And I know that the, the, that was a, you know, a little disruption in there from, from New York second. So we just trying to get straight because people were even calling me about, are we still having an election on the 7th? So people didn't know, so we're just trying to make sure. And if they, for instance, since it's moved to, to May, uh, 12th- And if they, for instance, since it's moved to May twelfth, you know, they are still able to get absentee ballots in. That's what we're trying to make sure. That's all. Thank you.
That's great. That's great. You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Dillard?
Is this information, I suspect that it is, but to put it on our website, this information instructions about how to exercise the avenue of an absentee ballot, we need that on our city website. And I would wonder if we're suggesting that we may even put information in the newspaper somehow or another to allow voters the step-by-step, one, two, threes, you know, of how to exercise these absentee ballots.
Yes, Mr. Dillard, and that is my plan this week of instructing the citizens of Natchez on the absentee balloting process. That was something that the city attorney and myself, we talked about early this morning. So I am planning on doing that of getting it on on the website, also in the newspapers, both newspapers, and all other avenues to let the public know the process, even using our social media. Because we do have a city Facebook page. So we will do that, Mr. Dillard. And the plan is to do that this week. Yes, sir. Okay.
Question for the city clerk?
Go ahead.
This is Dan Dillard for the city clerk. Now, the packet of information I received from the city clerk had additional cost figures as associated with Springbrook. I'm trying to understand what was approved was for the data fix. But the packet that I received, it goes on to say the other is additional finance and bank reconciliation training. And it's an amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars. Is that? Is that the city clerk's intention to bring that proposal to the board for action? Or is that included in what we had just approved?
No, sir, it's not included right now. I just need to get the data fixed on Mr. Dillard and go ahead and get them trained on bank rec. She submitted the information because we were talking about a neighborhood coming down in person. And I asked her about, you know, if the pandemic changed, she said, well, if we don't come in person, we put in a cost. And since we're not going to do either right now, I'm just going to focus really on the data fix and the bank rec. And when we do get to that part about the financing, she'll be able to finance permits, you can do voluntary training, transit. It'll include all the departments. But that's something to hear down the road. But right now, I'm just asking just for the data fix and the bank rec. But that came because first it wasn't that remote and it changed once the pandemic came.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Smith?
May I get some clarification on the data fix again? Is this just inputting bank reconciliation amounts into Springbrook?
She will get the previous data put in, Ms. Carter, she'll get all data put in from when we first. So we adopted the budget this year. We didn't have a beginning balance. So by her going in putting this information for us and teaching us how to continue to put in, we're gonna bring it all the way up to date. So once we learn how to reconcile in Springbrook and bring it up to date, we will have beginning balances, not only for our budget, but monthly you'll get a current up-to-date amount out of Springbrook. Right now, like I said, we're doing it from the Excel spreadsheet, even bank statement. We've got to get that data in there. If we ever want to use the Springbrook to have a real projection and history when it comes to budgeting, you really can budget, you know what you spent. And so once you get this previous data in Springbrook, we can see what we spend in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And when we come budgeting it, we have a real number that we can use to do our budget offer.
So.
Okay, so I am hearing that it is just inputting previous data, not doing reconciliations or anything like that. It's inputting previous data. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I do think once she does this for Ms. Carter, then we will be able to reconcile and including ourselves better. You know, we don't understand.
My question is, because I didn't understand that. I thought this was training to and putting in data.
She is training. She is training. She's training. She's gonna bring up the seed first.
How much is the training and how much? Maggie, can you clarify what portion is training and what portion is data input?
The four thousand, what I asked you for, four thousand, the four thousand fifty-six dollars is for her to answer the previous data in the system for us and train us how to use the data to verify ourselves. But she's gonna bring up the seed and she's gonna keep it up to speed. So training is included with that four thousand and twenty fifty-six dollars is included.
Because the training is included.
Just bank rec training, that's not gonna be out of the finances and these other programs. It's gonna be just bank rec training. We can get the real number in Springbrook.
Okay, I think, I guess what I'm leading to is just wondering if, I mean, data inputs, you know, that's something that part can do administrative and should we, would our money be, better be spent to pay to get some more bank reconciliation done that we're so behind on still because we haven't gotten what we needed from Camper. So I don't know. That was just my question to you. I mean, is this the most efficient way to use the four thousand dollars?
So I understand, based on my discussion with the city clerk, Alderman Smith, along with all the other aldermen, is that this, what the board's proven is basically for Springbrook to put in the data that goes back to fiscal year twenty sixteen. And it also provides training on the reconciliation process of the data in Springbrook that will bring us up to speed. Am I correct, Madam Clerk, on that?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on this?
Ms. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mathis.
I'm sorry, we kind of got with the clerk on two different things. And as I heard what she said, that devoted absentee ballot. I want to make sure she's sharing all, if not, I don't know how you do this because you are over day-to-day operations in the staff. But I would like to make sure that Ms. Bartley with senior citizens has this information also, so that it is going out to senior citizens that she's in contact with since she's over the senior citizens department for the city government. But I'd like to make sure that whatever is going on with absentee ballots is also shared with Ms. Bartley so that it can be passed on to the senior citizens that she's transporting, feeding, and dealing with. So do I have to make a motion for that or can we just, that will be taken care of, Mr. Mayor?
I will take care of that, Ms. Mathis. I will make sure that all that information is provided over to Ms. Bartley so that she can also assist with that in providing or disseminating that information to her patrons at the senior center. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, anything else for the city before we move on? If not, we're gonna move on to the city attorney for his report.
Okay, thank you. And it's now, good evening to everybody. So I've got a few items to present to the board. The first being a plan, designated plan amendment number one to the City of Natchez Group Health Plan. This document was forwarded to me a little over a week, week and a half ago from Marilyn Wheely with Performance, on behalf of Performance Health, who is the administrator of the City's Group Health Plan. This amendment will allow for additional covered expenses associated with COVID nineteen. It includes certain things such as COVID nineteen testing, telehealth, payment for telehealth-based technology services, request for early prescription reveals, inpatient hospital quarantines, and some other, like non-emergency ambulance transportation. And this needed to be executed and forwarded back to the company. And we're asking the board now to approve this amendment to the City's Group Health Plan.
Okay, you've heard the request from the city attorney. What's the pleasure of the board? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Irving, second by Alderman Davis. Unreadness on the motion. Hearing none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And how do you vote Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, it's been approved unanimously. Next item, city attorney, Latham?
The next item, I had prepared an authority to counsel a deed of trust that was originally executed by Margie P. Pullen to the City of Natchez, actually on May thirty-first, two thousand two. Apparently, it was a program back in two thousand and two that the city was sponsoring. City was granting a trust. It's actually a thirty-year deed of trust. It was in a total amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Of course, it's, we're eighteen years into it. Ms. Pullen, I think she either sold her house or refinanced it recently. Lisa Dell contacted me with respect to getting this deed of trust released. She advised that Ms. Pullen had made payments for a certain period of time and it'd been a long time. She had actually poured into Lisa refinancing before, and this wasn't an issue. But deed of trust is still outstanding. I discussed this with James Johnston, since he oversees these types of programs. He made the contacts that he could and he cannot determine the status of this deed of trust. As far as I know, I don't know that she's been receiving any payments in the recent past. And I've asked Sylvia to check from her office to see if she can determine, you know, what the status of this deed of trust is. And actually, I hadn't had time to talk back to Sylvia. Sylvia, if you could let me know right now, if you were able to make any determination about this particular deed of trust.
Which one is it? I like, you said deed of trust.
That's that deed, that's that deed of trust that was Margie Pullen to the City of Natchez that we discussed last week.
I don't recall.
Well. Margie Pullen.
Uh-uh.
In reference to what, Ms. Frazier, in reference to what property, Mr. Attorney?
Well, this is, this is property that's owned by Missus Pullen. And I guess it's something some of the SNAP loans or loans to renovate.
Oh, yeah.
So this, I mean, and this was done, like I stated, in two thousand and two. In two thousand and four, apparently, Mississippi Department of Transportation had to acquire a small piece of the land. And the city actually executed a partial release of that of the mortgage back then, so that the land that was being affected, that needed to go to Department of Transportation. But that's the only other documentation we could find on record pertaining. But, you know, Ms. Pullen notes, Lisa Dell's holding some funds based on this outstanding deed of trust. And we just need to make a determination whether or not it should be released. I know, you know, I can't make a determination. And if there's nothing in the city clerk's to indicate that that this money is still owed to the city, then she's entitled to have it released. It's a lien on her property and it's really up to the city to get this deed of trust released. And I guess the board could authorize the execution of the cancellation, you know, upon the city clerk making a determination that there's no money owed on that deed of trust or the city wants, the board wants to postpone it. That's another alternative. I mean, Lisa herself has tried to contact some of these, the agencies that handle these programs for the city and she could not make a determination. She couldn't get the information. But Ms. Pullen is.
You thought a minute, right? So there's probably a minute, a minute doesn't really say.
I'm not sure. Hello?
Yes, are you there?
I'm here.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I guess it's up to the board whether or not they want to go ahead and authorize you to execute this release depending on the clerk verifying that there's no funds owed to the City of Natchez based on this deed of trust.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Dillard. Go ahead.
To the city attorney, I'm gonna try to get my head around this. It sounds like we're just having to clear up some issues from the past that maybe weren't properly put in place. I looked up the address and it appears, at least the address does, at one fourteen North Shields Lane is where a convenience store is now located. Am I correct in that? To the city attorney.
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure where this property is located. It's mine.
Yeah, that's where the address shows up, down at the end of that North Shields Lane where it intersects, I guess Liberty Road and across from the neighborhood across there. But I'm just trying to get my head around it. Maybe I've got it wrong, but it sounds like Mrs. Pullen must have either subbed about it a part of her properties and that properties were sold and this is what's kind of hanging up her financial affairs. And am I close to understanding it?
It's my understanding as a resident. I hadn't looked on the I hadn't looked on the Geoportal to try to determine exactly where it is. But it was, my understanding is one of those programs, you know, like the SNAP loans that are granted to residents to renovate their homes. I don't think the city would be in business of loaning, you know, doing loans for businesses to renovate their property.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mathis, go ahead.
I had spoken with the attorney about this. I understand about the SNAP loan. But I'm confused now. I think we need to defer this until we know where the property is. Because as the attorney just said, I know we never used any businesses for any kind of SNAP loans. And I tried to remember after he said two thousand, maybe two thousand and two, when we actually started doing SNAP loans. And I know it was a five-year period on a house. But we've never used one that I was aware of, that when I was explaining it to people to get them to make sure that they applied for them that had any business associated. So we need to make sure, I don't know what we are looking at, where this area, this address is before. I'm gonna ask that we defer this until we can get that information.
Okay, is it okay with you, Bob, that we defer it?
Yeah, sure. It's fine with me. I mean, I think we just need to get it resolved, you know, from the city's standpoint, whether or not there's any funds due and owing to the city on this particular, whatever this loan was back in two thousand and two. It's been eighteen years and there would have to be some kind of records in the city clerk's office to indicate whether or not there's any money owed. But we can wait till the next meeting. Or if we have a special meeting, we'll make that determination. We could take action then. It's just, I think Ms. Pullen's entitled. If she doesn't know any much, she's entitled to have a lien released.
Okay, Bob, that's fine. We can just defer it until we have that special call. Sounds good.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Some of the board members may be aware, I'm not sure how many are aware of the. uh, some of the board members may be aware, uh, I'm not sure how many are aware of the, uh, issue with the North Natchez Drainage Project, uh, up Cemetery Road Marblestone area. Uh, back, uh, in March, uh, the Public Service Commission issued an order that provided waterworks departments could not discontinue service, uh, during this pandemic. Uh, and so the, you know, waterworks became concerned with this particular project because as, uh, W. Blaine was going to proceed with their construction project, they were going to have to discontinue some service to some of the residents for some period of time during the day while they did, uh, did the construction. Uh, so Blaine, uh, wrote the city a letter saying that they were suspending any work. Um, it, but as it, as it turned out, um, and there, there were a certain, certain, uh, provisions in the contract that could possibly invoke some cost and penalties on the city for shut, shutting them down. As it, and it turned out that the Public Service Commission order technically wouldn't have applied to this particular project because it, that was a discontinuous order that was mainly concerned with cutting people off the non-payment during the pandemic. And it wouldn't affect them for the, for the timeframe, just it was like two, three, four hours during the day. But, a- in our discussion with Blaine Company, they, they, they became concerned about any potential liability due to the pandemic, if, even if they shut off some residents' water for, you know, three, four hours during any particular day, it may cause some issues for them. So as a result, um, we, we've had discussion among the waterworks, uh, and cities, and Blaine, and we arrived in an agreement, uh, that we would suspend work pertaining to the North Natchez project for a period of sixty days. And we, that's, which would end, I think, June the fourteenth. And that, uh, then they, they would either continue at that point, or we could take a look at it to see if we can have this, uh, issue as, as urgent as it is now. And so based on this, th- there would just be a sixty-day suspension. There won't be any penalties associated either with the contractor or the city or the waterworks. Uh, everything will just kind of be, uh, you know, suspended for that period, and we'll pick up in sixty days.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Ms. Mathis.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of the mayor to sign the agreement to suspend work on the North Natchez project for sixty days and as Dee says, or at which time, or sooner if agreed to by all parties, which is Dee on page two, but I would also like to speak to my motion if I get a second. Thank you.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dillard. And readiness now, Ms. Mathis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as you know, Mayor, we had a long, I think it was about a two-hour conversation, conference call on this particular situation. And I was trying to figure out a way, and I did write the area that we could have possibly worked it in sections. Uh, but when I came home, at, I mean, I was, I got hit with it at one time, it immediately, didn't know it was being considered. But when I came home and I, and, and after riding in the area, and I had been to a meeting, a conference call meeting, and I opened my door and washed my hands, washed my face, and did some other things, dropped the clothes that I had on, that I had been out in the water. I don't, I don't want anybody to be without any water for any period of time while this is going on, while this pandemic is going on. And I, you know, I don't want anything different for Joe than I want for the other people in the community. Even though this has been, uh, this project is close to my heart, and these people have been waiting a long, long time. I just feel like for their safety, and I, I, I had to think about this and pray over it. That for their safety, it would be better if we just went on. And I, I agree with the sixty days, but as Dee says, it says sixty days at which, or sooner if agreed to all parties. So as, you know, as soon as we can pick this back up and get it worked out, the better. But for their safety, I want to make sure that they, they have access to water at all times of the day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. Further readiness. If there be none, how do you vote, Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Fraser?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, Bob, next item?
Uh, I'll see. The next item I have is the, um, a resolution I prepared that, uh, the reinstatement amendment extension of the stay-at-home order. Uh, this is basically, uh, same order that the board entered previously, uh, that requires, you know, essential, essential services mainly to operate, and, uh, advises people to stay at home during the pandemic. Uh, I will point out to the board, uh, in section three, there was, uh, an additional provision added after, uh, thorough discussion, uh, with the task force on Monday dealing with funeral homes, uh, that, that, uh, states that this, this section shall also apply to funeral homes, funeral directors, any other persons conducting funerals and or memorial services and receptions pertaining to funerals and other services. There's a detailed section for guidance and the conduct of funeral provided, and it gives the, uh, website, uh, that's, that, uh, that Funeral Directors Association. And it sets forth the CDC, uh, recommendations, uh, at that website, and it states that they should be strictly adhered. Uh, so this, uh, the other, um, thing that this particular resolution will do, it will, it will run coexistensively with the, um, shelter-in-place order that has been entered by Governor Tate Reeves, uh, which, uh, become effective April the third and run through April the twentieth. Uh, and it will continue to run with the governor's. If he, if he extends his order, this order will automatically extend with it. But if he decides to let his, uh, order, uh, go ahead and end, the board at that point in time can have a special call meeting to, to make such extension as the board uh, fit at that particular time. So, um, this is the order that, that, that we got, and there's been some discussion of whether or not it should, um, I guess, run, depending whether the governor's order or whether or not the board wants to consider making it a longer period of time. So the board can discuss what they would like to do.
Okay, um, members of the board?
Mayor, one more question for the attorney.
Uh, go ahead, uh, Mr. Dillard.
Uh, I, I'm reading under, um, where it starts, the section one, and as we had approved it prior, uh, it was to April the twentieth. Now, in my understanding, and I should know this, but is that the mayor, I mean, excuse me, the governor's stay-at-home, um, extends out to April the thirtieth as it is now. Is that correct?
April twentieth.
Say it again?
The governor's, the ga- the governor's executive order goes to April the twentieth.
Okay, it, so i- in that case, what's the question before this board? Either extend it past that or to, uh, just coincide with it?
Well, the decision for the board with this resolution, it would become effective, our prior order would become effective again, and it would run through April the twentieth unless the governor extends his executive order. Then this order would continue to run as long as the executive order of the governor runs. It also gives the board the flexibility to come back and extend it further if the, if the governor decides to let his executive order run out on April the twentieth, and it would end.
Um, okay, I understand. We're, we're just staying in, in step with the governor's stay-at-home order, and we can at a special call meeting either extend it beyond that as we choose.
I, it would, it would, it would just keep the, um, board from having a special call meeting to extend it, um, and, and kind of stay in line with the same timeframe. But if you have the board whether or not it, it wants to run through April the twentieth and then look at it, or the board wants to, you know, pick a different date to allow their order to run.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Ms. Smith.
Uh, and the odds are that he, he will probably be extending it, so we'll, we'll have to probably have a special call meeting. I'm just sitting here thinking out loud a little bit, but, I mean, should we just do it to the thirtieth and then revisit it then? And then we're covered? Because we know the peak is bear, it's now even, they're saying twen- I'm just sitting here looking it up as we speak, but the peak now, they're even putting past the twentieth, like the twenty-second. So my, it's most likely he's gonna have to extend it. But, I mean, we can extend it on the twentieth if we all rather, but I, I just feel like we're gonna be extending it one way or the other.
Yeah, my, uh, recommendation, uh, go ahead, Ms. Mathis.
Ms. Mayor, I thought what the attorney said is that we would let ours reflect what the, what the governor did, and then if he did extend it, if the governor did extend it, then I, then ours would extend also. Is that not what you said, Mr. Attorney?
Nah. It would, it would, it would. Our, our order will be extended if the governor extends his executive order.
That's what I thought you said, and, and then we would, yeah.
So let me, uh, let me say this, uh, Ms. Smith, if you don't mind. Uh, we've got an expert, uh, who, who's on the call, who could probably give us some guidance as relate to, you know, what they're predicting the spike to be in, uh, in the state of Mississippi, and more specifically here in southwest Mississippi. Uh, we've got, uh, Dr. Muir on the call, and if you would give us your, uh, expertise, Dr. Muir, uh, and, and let us know, uh, what you think, uh, if we should go ahead on and extend it, which would be my recommendation to the thirtieth, uh, but, uh, what, what do you say, Dr. Muir?
Well, hello, everybody. Thanks for having me back. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, so, uh, why don't you let me just catch everybody up to where Adams County is? And that might help you guys determine sort of where we think we're, we're going from a, from a medical perspective, because I like to deal with facts and the numbers here. And so, you know, you guys know that I run the, uh, my internal medicine practice in my af- uh, after-hours clinic here, and we are doing quite a few tests, uh, in the clinic. We've done over a hundred and seventy tests so far. We've, we've had twenty-three plus positives, uh, with ser- uh, ten, ten or so pending. We're averaging about one or two positives a day over the last, uh, week and a week and a half. So the numbers are, the numbers are coming in, the positives are there. So if you look nationally, of course, you guys will follow that, that is, we are seeing every day, we see that the, uh, death tolls and the cases are continuing to rise, so that has not plateaued yet. At Adams County, interesting enough, we are doubling our daily numbers on average over the past two weeks, uh, every four, four or five days, which is a high number if you compare it to the rest of the state. We're in the top three or four counties in the state on that number. It means doubling daily cases per, uh, every four to five days over the past two weeks. So, uh, you know, give you guys this an up-to-date view, view of Adams County. We, uh, as of today, and this is, this is real-time numbers, because I know if you look at the, the state part of health site, they still have us at one Adams County death. Well, I hate to inform, inform you, but now we're up to three. Uh, we have a total of five deaths. These are all patients that have been in the hospital. Uh, you know, at, at, here at our hospital, we, we also tend to the surrounding areas. So we, in Concordia Parish, north of us, uh, in, in the counties north and south of us. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, you guys are well aware, Wilkinson County is still in the top twenty in the nation in terms of hotspot. That's per capita cases. So we've got a lot going around us, and our hospital is doing a fantastic job. We're, we're, we, I would say, uh, and talk to Lance Boyd often, uh, that we may be even over-prepared, but that's okay. That's always a good thing. All of the sister hospitals in the state, uh, are very helpful with the merit health syst- uh, with the merit health system in place. But right now, we still have five or six folks on the ventilators, and those are, those are, we don't want any, but we have five or six. The state is, uh, uh, has eighty-four on the ventilators. If you do the math, we've got about ten percent of the state ventilators. Uh, we also are following ten to fifteen positive cases in the hospital that are sick, or there are patients under investigation, the, the PUI patients. Uh, our two nursing, uh, two of our nursing homes in town have had outbreaks. Now, be it, an outbreak is defined by the state, uh, as one positive, but in one of our nursing homes, we have more than one positive, and our hospital has actually reached out and is helping them do, uh, do a better job with reducing the spread and preparing, preparing the home. And so, you know, we're dealing with a lot here in Natchez, and I just want everybody to understand that, that we have not reached a plateau yet. The, uh, I know the nation, we followed this model from University of Washington. It's been criticized for not being accurate. It changes all the time. Remember, that model's only based on the data that's, that's, uh, that they get each day. It's what we know now, data. And it comes in, they're adding data to it all the time. It's worldwide data they use. And for Mississippi, we still are looking for that peak, uh, somewhere around the twenty-second of April. And be it last week, that peak was reduced down to the nineteenth. That meant at that time, the data was, the data was suggesting that we were doing a really good job in the state. If we may reach the peak earlier, the peak will be lower, and we'll get past it quicker faster because of some of the data that's come in, and I'm not privy to all the, all that, but they've moved that back to the twenty-second. That, you know, may be concerning, may just be that we're dealing with models like this. But the, the fact of the matter is, we are still going up. We haven't plateaued. And even when we plateau, uh, it, that's not something that just stays up for a few days and then, and bottoms out. The storm is not over. That just means that cases will stop elevating, and we'll see a slow gradual decline in cases and deaths, uh, over the next few months. So I wanted to give you guys that up-to-date, those up-to-date numbers, because I think that can be really helpful in sort of determining where we are in terms of stay-at-home. Uh, what else can I tell you?
Are there any questions for, uh, Dr. Muir while he's on the call? And as we know, he's pretty busy in terms of his practice. Yes, Alderman Mathis?
Well, Dr. Muir is my doctor, so, Doctor, you gotta, okay, so if this, um, resolution coexists with Governor Tate's resolution, and, I mean, Governor Reeves' res- Governor Tate Reeves' res- resolution, and if Governor Ri- Reeves runs it to the thirtieth, ours would, would coexist with it by running to the thirtieth, would that not take care of what you're saying?
Well, I think that's a, that's a good thing. Uh, I think that right now, we're, uh, we're still in the middle of this thing, and, uh, we, uh, we don't know exactly how much longer. That's why it's twenty-four seven, constant talk everywhere about this, and there's a lot of experts. And, and so we're listening to all of them, following these numbers. So, uh, Ms. Mathis, the, the real issue here is, is if we get to the thirtieth, which, uh, that's, that gives us, that's at least more time for us to reevaluate where those numbers are going. I would ask, you know, from a public health standpoint, and I'm not an expert there, but I do know that we need to, this needs to be extended. I mean, we're, we're, this is gonna go, uh, well into, this plateau's gonna last into May. We're gonna see decline throughout May, and I, and I hope that, uh, for the first time ever, I hope that it's a hundred degrees on June first, and that this virus slows down tremendously with heat, as we're expected to, to do. And that will be in a much better place to, to put forth in, uh, a plan to reopen everything but the essential services. But can I say one thing about that, uh, in regards to essential services? And the mayor knows, I've called him on this, on this situation as well, just prior to, to Governor Reeves, uh, implementing this shelter at home. But, but I, I really, and I know this is, this is just my original thought, this is me reading and, and listening, is that you, you guys know that right now is the best time for us to work together from the, from the health, the medical side, and from, from the government side to develop that really broad, comprehensive, united campaign to bring us to a new normal. And we can't just say, okay, let's stop, because this governor says this is the date, that's when we stop. Because that doesn't fix, it's not going to fix anything. And I've, I've been very concerned all along and critical at times, even though I, I, I'm trying to be, uh, constructive, constructive here, is that our essential services really need to be the model for this. And the model for this, uh, moving forward so that every other business knows how to implement the new, the new normal with all these protective measures. Because these measures aren't going to go away. Hopefully, they're going to decline in severity for social distancing and masking and hand washing. But we can, we cannot give that up. We need, we need to, as a community, develop resources for all of our businesses because they've struggled and they've been late to the game a little bit. And not because they haven't been worried about it, because they don't, they didn't have internal, in, in internal ways to develop their protocols. And we need to help them do that. We need time.
Okay, are there any other questions for Dr. Muir while he's on the call? Any others? If not, uh...
I don't have a question.
Uh, who is this?
This is Chesney.
Uh, hold, Alderman Irving, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Dr. Muir, for enlightening me and the rest of the board that was on, giving us an update and, um, sharing the information about why we should extend the stay-home ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
So my recommendation to the board is to, that we execute this, uh, for at least the thirtieth of the, of the month. Um, yes, Ms., uh, Smith, your question?
What, so moved.
Okay. Is there a second? Uh, second by Alderman Davis. I'm reading this on a motion. If there be none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, uh, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, uh, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It is unanimous, it is so ordered. Uh, thank you, Dr. Muir, uh, for serving as a resource this, uh, this afternoon, uh, to the board on this very important matter.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir. Uh, city attorney?
Yes, uh, Mayor, I, I think it would probably be good if we just went ahead of, we've got a, a second meeting on April the twenty-eighth. We would be meeting one when not.
Uh, re- repeat your question again, uh, attorney?
I said, we'll have a meeting on April the twenty-eighth, is that not correct?
Uh, yes.
No, I mean, I, I would think it would be appropriate to go ahead and put that on the agenda, even though it's two days before the end. That would avoid having a, a, a second meeting two days later. If if it wouldn't even need to get extended then. I, I was, the whole purpose of making it run with the governor's order is if he pushed it out another twenty or even thirty days, we're going to have to have a special meeting. But I, and I think in, in light of the first decision to move, you know, to extend it to the thirtieth, if we could go ahead and put it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth, that would be close enough to get the board to make a decision then whether or not to even move it out further.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we will, uh, put it on the agenda for the next regular board meeting. Thank you, that's a good point.
The other last, um, item I have for the regular meetings, uh, and I have one executive, uh, session matter. Uh, as, as y'all recall, the last board meeting, um, some representatives from the contractors involved in, in, uh, building the new, uh, Dollar General made a presentation about the right-of-way, uh, which is known as the Old Prentice Highway, west of Highway sixty-one. Uh, and the board, you know, agreed to, uh, their proposition to go out and acquire these, um, rights, uh, the, 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 uh, quitclaim deeds, uh, that would work in conjunction with a, a survey done by Luther Marling out at Jordan County Session to set the boundaries of the, um, Old Prentice Highway, uh, because there was some issue respect to those boundaries. They have now, they've accumulated all of the, uh, quitclaim deeds, except there, there's one small piece that MPNL has, that they're, they're delaying getting theirs, uh, deed in. But they were like, they need to move forward to their transaction on Thursday. And so I prepared this resolution, which just essentially says that the City of Natchez, uh, has considered Old Prentice Highway a public road. And that, of course, the city has maintained this road for a long time, well over fifty years. We've installed water lines, sewer lines along the right-of-way. Uh, Luther Marling prepared the boundaries, uh, the survey boundaries and description. But these quitclaim deeds, those deeds have not been executed. And, uh, the, the board is willing to accept those quitclaim deeds, uh, from these adjacent landowners so that there won't be any issue where those boundaries are with respect to the, this, uh, section of public road owned by the city. So I'm, I'm just presenting this resolution to be considered by the board.
Okay, you've heard the request, uh, from this, uh, move by Alderman Dillard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith. Any readness on a motion? If there be none, uh, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman, uh, Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And how do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
It's unanimous, the resolution has been adopted.
Okay, Mayor, and, uh, that's all I have, it's just, it's just that.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, city attorney. Um, under the mayor's report, um, do we have, uh, Mr. Larry Gardner on the call to kind of give the board an update on, uh, the, uh, election process for the city elections?
Hello, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Uh, we are still very concerned about the COVID-nineteen issue that we're having to deal with on the primary election. Uh, and it really concerns, uh, the safety of the voters as well as the safety of our poll workers in doing the primary election. We want to make sure that nobody, I mean, nobody comes up with this COVID-nineteen and expend, sends that out to other people that they know. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to move the primary to a date that we feel much more comfortable with at this point, as long as we are still escalating in cases in Adams County and the City of Natchez. We would suggest moving the primary to June second. Uh, the runoff is in twenty-one days under the statutes. Uh, so that was June twenty-third. And then three weeks after that, uh, the election would be July fourteenth, the general election. There is no runoff on a general election. So it's whoever gets the most votes wins in that election. Because the election has been altered now from the original date, this is considered a special election. Uh, and there are no state statutes that address that situation. We had talked with Holly Robertson at the Secretary of State's office to verify that this morning. Uh, and the city has emergency powers. You can consider this special election as a not normally scheduled election. Uh, we really feel that, be, also because it is a, a special election, as soon as the officials are certified as winners in the general election, they can be sworn into office. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that?
Uh, are there any questions? Uh, Ms. Mathis?
Uh, when we go to a special election, what does that enti- in, 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 include? I mean, what are the parameters? I think what we need, because we, we've just done some things in terms of shelter in place. So I think we need to understand exactly what the, uh, what the special election guidelines are. Or if that opens up any other windows. Um, I, I, I think that we need to hear all of this. And I think that all of the, the people who've, who've, uh, placed their name in, I'm not against what you're saying. I'm simply saying we need more information. And this wasn't listed on our, our agenda. So we didn't, we, nobody has gotten any other information, even themselves to research it. And you have other people out there who are running for election. I think it needs to include them too, uh, in the discussion so we can know what's going on. Um, I, I just want to know, when you get to, when you're changing it from a regular election to a special election, which is what I heard you say, I need to know all of the parameters that are involved in a special election. And, um, I, I would hope that we could get this far to, uh, us making a determination on that today. Because we just got this.
Once, once you alter the date of the normally scheduled election, then it becomes a special election. Uh, the only thing a special election gives you is if you were a county election commissioner, gives you more days that you can, uh, be prepared for doing the election and a little more training. In this particular case, that is not there. Uh, what we're basically proposing is more time for the candidates to get out and campaign. More of an opportunity of the City of Natchez to get the information out to the general public to allow more people to vote absentee if they can, especially if they can't get out of their house, if we're in, if we're in a, in stay order. Uh, and also, they can, they can still do the absentee balloting up until Saturday noon before the election. So it's a, it's given a lot more people, a lot more opportunity to vote, uh, and won't expose them to this, you know, this virus that we're concerned.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ms. Irving.
Okay, I just want to ask Mr. Gardner. He said, give candidates more time to get out and campaign. At this point, we shouldn't be campaigning. And if we just extended an ordinance until April thirtieth, okay? Dr. Muir just said, there's a possibility this may be this way until June. How is it that we can go and canvass? I mean, we, at this point, we shouldn't because we don't want to continue to spread this virus. So, um...
Well, that, that is very true, but...
I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need to extend it, but I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need to extend the voting. I understand that. But to say that we can get out and canvass and campaign, that's causing harm to the general public. And that's not what I want to do. We're trying to keep people at home.
That's exactly correct.
We're trying to keep people at home, I mean...
Hopefully, you'll be able to go out and canvass the election and do that stuff between the stay-at-home order and the first primary. Right now, you haven't had, or any of the candidates had much of an opportunity to go out and knock on anyone's doors. And I think we all know that's a very important aspect of running an election. Hopefully, if we put this off to, in the, in the situation and the pandemic settles down, we'll have a much more, or, or a better opportunity to at least get out and do some of the things they haven't been able to do for the last month and probably won't for the next couple of weeks or maybe even another month. We don't know.
Right, well, we're looking at, I mean, according to the statistics that have just been given, I don't feel, I don't believe that it would be safe. I mean, the overall objective of what we've just done is to take precautions for the safety of our community to end to more the numbers of spreading this virus. So, I understand what you mean.
Alderman Frazier, click your phone on mute.
Say that, the concern that I have is for not only myself, my family, but for every constituent in this city, but every community member here, and it's to stop the spread of this virus.
Mr. Mayor, this is Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Gardner.
I think that's the wish of everyone, nobody, and I mean, that's the whole point to, to delaying it from the first time from the originally scheduled primary. And again, that's the point in doing this again. It's for the safety of the constituents, the safety of the public, the safety of the candidates, and to make sure that everybody has a fair opportunity to get out and cast their vote. We don't want anybody to be denied their right to vote. There are more opportunities in this, obviously, in voting absentee. I'm not a, a strong believer of having to do a lot of absentee. But in this particular case, it's probably the safest thing for a voter to do is to call the circuit or the city clerk's office and request an absentee ballot because they're stuck at home. So that would be considered a temporary disability. If you can't get out of your house, that's a temporary disability. Does not require a notary or, or registrar. All it requires then is just a witness. And they could go ahead and get those votes cast. No matter when this is going, the vote still won't be counted until the actual day of that election.
Uh, Mr. Dillard?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a, a simple question. Uh, the absentee voted that have been received thus far, I'm mistaken, will those be held and applied to whatever date we move the primaries to?
Yes, absolutely. They're already locked up.
Right, and then I guess my other comment is, I, it, it sounds to me like at least the election commissioner and Alderman Irving are pretty much in, 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 uh, agreement as to their discussion. So I, I, I just, I, I see if we move it and if we meet on the twenty-eighth of this month, we'll have a better perspective of, of, of how we're going to move forward. Um, one other question for the election commissioner. Are your poll workers, are, are, are there procedures in place or that you've already contemplated being in place? And how to address, um, the actual walk-in, uh, votes that, that would occur, it, no matter what date we move it in? And I, I, I'm sure that you are because you're that kind of person, but I'm just saying, with the mask and the gloves and the shields and all that, and has there been any discussion about how to proceed along those lines?
Yeah, in fact, we did some, you know, for the presidential preference primary because the pandemic had just started at that particular point. So we used, uh, cleaning and sanitation materials on the, on the voting machines and on the voter registration cards. Uh, and we needed to make sure that those people stayed separated. Uh, we still have some other issues that we didn't address that we probably could in this next one. And that would be, of course, face masks and making sure that the poll workers stay at least six feet away from each other. And that we control in some way the number of people to come into the precinct or ward to vote so that we don't have forty or fifty people in there all at one time. So that's why, again, absentee voting would be nice because it'll cut down the number of people that will be going to the wards to vote on election day. Because the problem we have on election day is we have three different times of the day where we get hit with large numbers of people. Of course, that's when it first opens and people are trying to vote before they go to work. And then we have a fairly large number of people come around the lunch period where they'll go ahead and vote. And then a fairly large number again after five o'clock, uh, when they get off of work. And so we have some concerns about, some of these wards have very good participation. So you could easily have fifty, sixty, or seventy people in there as well as the ten people you've got working the polls. That's way past the number of ten that they're, that the CDC is recommending.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Ms. Mathis.
Mayor?
All right, I have a question about the parameters of the special election. Now, that's what I'm trying to make sure I get, and I guess I'm going to, to yield it to the, to the attorney. Uh, but I'm asking, Mr. Gardner, all right, when you have a special election, what's the term? Is the term for the same amount of years, the four-year term? Or does this special election, calling this a special election, have, does it change in any way the understanding that we have of the time limit that we are running for? Are we running for, 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 for a special time limit?
No.
Or we, uh, well, I'm, I'm trying to make sure, and then, uh, go on after that, and I have a follow-up.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with the term of office because that hasn't been changed. You would have to change that, the, you know, the board and the mayor, you'd have to make a vote on that. Special elections are generally called a field position. Special elections are generally called the filled positions that have, somebody has otherwise left. And all they ever get voted in for is the balance of that election period. So if, if I left office today, as an example, somebody would have to run for office in November in a special election and they would finish out the years of my term. And then they would still have to run when the next term of office came up. So it doesn't change that in any way.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
They, they'll be sworn in a couple of weeks later is all it melts to.
Because, well, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that that is directly from the Secretary of State's office because our term of office actually ends June thirtieth. And so that's why I'm asking whether this, denoting this a special election, whether it means that we are running for a special time and we're gonna have to say, for instance, have to run again next year, I don't know. I'm trying to get straight on from the attorney and the Secretary of State's office, whether changing this terminology to special election affected, I heard what you said. You said it wouldn't and then, but I know our term of office as it is now ends June thirtieth with a new administration taking place July one. And I understand the pandemic, I'm talking about the legalities of what you are suggesting. And I would rather us have, I, I, I can take, I, 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 I wanna get out after this thing is over with. I wanna be able to, I want people to come and vote, I want more people to come and vote. But I don't have, I just wanna know what does a special election allow legally by the state of Mississippi, Attorney General and, and the Secretary of State's office? Because what you just said, we do end June thirtieth. That's the end of our term. So I think we need to take something from, from the Secretary of State's office that we can have. I, 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 you know, I don't have a problem with what you wanna do because I want more people out and I wanna be able to do what I need to do. But I wanna know, I want it addressed from the Secretary of State's office so that we know exactly that, that they are accepting this because of this pandemic. Because see, now we're changing the title of the election. So I'm gonna ask, we get, we get, we get something from the Secretary of State's office and Attorney General on this whole, on this suggestion that you are bringing forth and that we come back, we get, even if we have to come back Thursday, or, or tomorrow, whenever, before we pass. That's what I'm gonna ask.
You're not gonna change the title of the election, you're just changing the type of election it is. All the ballots have been all printed, all the software is made for the first Democratic primary. None of that changes. It just means that you've changed the date, the date that was originally on the books for running the election. You've had to move that date to another, that's the only thing that's different. It doesn't, now, I do understand your concern and I had not thought about that either, but I would, I assumed, and I know you shouldn't do that, that you would, whoever is in office, stay in office until they, somebody is certified to replace them.
Yes, sir, but when you gave the name, special election, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just asking for clarification from the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General on what you are suggesting. And once they clarify that what everything you said is, is the way it will be handled, then I don't have a problem with it, but I'd like to have some clarification. Just like you said, you hadn't, you assumed, you used the word assumed, and you used the word special election. So those are two terms that you use, special election and assumed. And I'm saying, I want something clarified from the Secretary of State's office, and I'm asking that we delay this until we, 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 we find out from them exactly what, what this entails. We're gonna have to delay the election, I'm saying that, but, but we're gonna have, we need to know what we're doing. And that's what I'm asking. And I don't want it just from the attorney off the top of his head. I wanna know from the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General. I want it written out and I, I can make that motion. You know, and as a matter of fact, I saw a move, I saw a move, I'm sorry, I'm saying, I saw a move.
Let's, let's see, let's see, hold on, hold up, Ms. Mathis. I'll come back to your motion. Let Ms. Frazier ask his question, he's been trying to chime in.
Okay.
I, I'm like, uh, Ms. Mathis, although I'm, I'm, I'm running on a vote. But the thing that gets me is, is special election. And I'm, and I'm thinking, if we, we start a special election, that makes, that makes it possible if you're talking about a special election, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have to, uh, do we have to go back and re-qualify it? Or we might, I might have an opponent that you're gonna hold a special election, you never know. Although I don't have one, so that, this is, we, we set this election for May twelfth and I, and, yeah, I mean, we set for May twelfth, I think that we should go it on and do what we have to do. Because if we keep kicking this can of fun on down the road, what's gonna happen? If we tell them we're gonna do it in June, before you know it, we, we gonna have, we, we need to get in office before budget time and we need to have our people back. If we don't have everything set, we gonna be, we gonna be arguing until January of, of twenty twenty-one. Or what we need to, that the budget is in there. So I understand about the pandemic, but we need to get the ball rolling and get the city rolling as, as soon as possible. That's my comment, Ms. Mayor, that's all I have to say.
Okay, all right, uh, Ms. Frazier, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms., uh, Mathis?
Yes, I wanna move that we contact, take Mr. Gardner's suggestion, pass it on to the Secretary of State and the Attorney General and get clarification from them on, on the, uh, primary being six-two, the runoff being six-twenty-three, the general being seven-fourteen, the term special election, and what happens to, uh, the fact that our term of office ends on, uh, June thirtieth? I need clarification on all of those. And then I ask that we have a, a, a special call meeting to, uh, adopt it once we get that clarification in writing for those, those parties. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Ms., Ms., excuse me.
Second by Alderman Irving. Unreadiness on the motion. Unreadiness on the motion, uh, Mr. Frazier?
Mr. Gardner, you making that determination, uh, uh, by yourself or what?
No, we talked with Holly Robertson, who's the, uh, head of the Elections Division at the Secretary of State's office. She's an attorney for the Secretary of State.
Okay, so you confirm with, you, you're, you're gonna confirm with her what, what needs to be done because, you know...
Yes, we alre, we already did, we talked to her, uh, this morning before we even made this proposal.
So really, it's up to the city where we...
Go ahead, Ms. Frazier. Hold, Mr. Frazier? Go ahead.
You hear, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Gardner, the city of Natchez where we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, well, I, I think she has...
What's your, what, I'm having a hard time hearing, Mr. Frazier.
Uh, Alderman Mathis, put your phone on mute, please. All right, go ahead, Mr. Frazier.
What I'm saying is that you talked to Ms. Robertson and, and she said, really, it's never up to the city of Natchez when they wanna hold the election, am I correct?
Uh, again, I didn't hear the, the question. Could, could you say it again, please?
Okay, you talked to Ms. Robertson of, of the Election Commission?
Yeah.
And up in the office, and really, if they, it's left, from my understanding, it's, it's really left up to the city of Natchez when they wanna hold this election, am I correct?
Uh, from what I can hear what you're saying, yes. What, what she had told us, uh, you know, and we talked to her about it, and remember, you've already moved the date one time. So with the moving the date had nothing to do with qualifications or anything. And there is no state statute that dictates what you do under a pandemic. Now, she verified that to us. So the only thing that controls this situation is what the local charter codes control. And it's questionable whether our charter even addresses, uh, how we handle a pandemic.
Yes, Mayor, according to our charter, according to the charter, I understand what you said, it's, it's a pandemic. According to the charter, you're going by charter, because we have a, a charter in the state of Mississippi. So therefore, it is my suggestion, it's in the, in the legislature's board, that we go ahead on with this election as, as set by the board for, uh, April, I mean, I'm sorry, May twelfth.
Okay, uh, Ms. Smith, you had unreadiness on the motion?
Um, yeah, I was just curious, so if this is gone in front of the Secreti, Secretary of State's office, what are we going back to get, to them for specifically on this motion?
May I address that, and since I made the motion? Two things, the, the title of special election and the fact that the gentleman said, Mr. Gardner said, he assumed, he didn't look at the fact that our, our term ended June thirtieth. He assumed, those are the two questions mainly that I'm asking, that we get clarification in writing from the Secretary of State's office. They can do it and, and fax it or email it to us immediately.
Okay, uh, is there father unreadness on the motion?
Can I, uh, can I, oh, for comments, please?
Yes, uh, City Attorney?
Um, of course. Larry and I are good friends, I, I may have to disagree with him on, on this position because I spent a lot of time working with the Secretary of State and Attorney General's office trying to get the first, um, reset of the primary date. Um, and it, it wasn't done quickly, wasn't done in a matter of few minutes. It wasn't done with just one call, the Secretary of State's talked to some, some person up there. Um, I, I think, I think it could create some issues. Uh, what we're having now is not a special election, it's a general election. It's just a postponement of the primary. It was still fit within the timeframes that you can conduct our elections under a normal procedure. I, I understand this issue with the pandemic. Uh, quite frankly, I, I don't think you'll be any better June the second with respect to protecting the poll workers, the voters, everybody involved with the elections than you will on, uh, May, the May date. Uh, I, I thi, I think it's time to get enough protection set up so that you can protect your poll workers, protect the voters. Uh, I, but I do really, I think there's a real issue, especially if you, if you wanna call this a special election now, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know that would, whether it would be legal. Um, and, and we, we could certainly, would be more apt to have a contest involved or a challenge of this election. You can, you can say, well, in a pandemic, we can use our, our emergency orders to whatever we wanna do. I mean, I just think we're asking for litigation. If, if you think it's, you think, think seriously that it's, uh, the pandemic is such, or will be such on, uh, the middle of May, it will be so that much different three weeks later? I'll agree, I, I can agree, but y'all go to, I don't, I, I wouldn't go just to the Secretary of State. It's gotta be confirmed by the Attorney General. I've already did it with the Secretary of State with respect to, uh, absentee voting. They don't make these decisions. They make recommendations, AG office has to sign off on it. And of course, all of you probably already know, the AG's decision is not a legal decision, it's just an opinion. So it's not gonna solve any problems really getting an AG's opinion, it could always end up in court. But I, I just wanted to offer that, uh, for consideration when you're trying to make these decisions.
Okay, uh, father unreadness on the motion? If there being none, yes, Ms. Smith?
Thinking, Ms., um, Mathis might be okay to amend hers to include contacting the AG on this as well.
I, I think, Mr. Mayor, that's what I said, both, both Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General. But I, I think at this point, I wanna defer this until the, our attorney has given us some information. And we need to let our attorney be a guiding force as he was in the other resolutions that were written and, and brought forth. And so he's asking us to be very, very careful about what we do right this minute. And I would like to defer this until the attorney can get with those people, the attorney, the Secretary of State, the Attorney General, uh, we had gone to the governor before, he has a lot on his hands, and the Elections Commission as we, that we did before to get this straight. Because we, we, we need to be, he just cautioned us to be very, very careful. So I'm, 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 I'm asking to defer to the, the, the comment of the city attorney who had worked on this before.
Okay, uh...
We can have a, a special call on it after we've gotten the information and he feels more comfortable with what Mr. Gardner is proposing.
So why don't the city attorney work in concert, uh, with Mr. Gardner, uh, and, you know, check into this stuff as you stated in your motion?
And then get back to us.
Okay. And get back to the board, all right? All right, any other unreadiness? If there being none, uh, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote? Alderman Mathis? Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Davis?
Aye.
Okay, and Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, uh, it's unanimous, uh, so, Mr. Gardner, uh, City Attorney, uh, work on this, we're getting with the Secretary of State, AG's office, uh, and get back with the board on it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, um, and that's all I have, so any new business at this time? If not, uh, we're gonna move on, uh, to a motion for a closed determination. Uh, Dustin, uh, has that information for the closed determination executive session been sent out to the board?
Not yet, Pam has it and she'll send it out right now.
Okay, so at this time, uh, members of the board, let me tell the public, uh, those who are on the call, who are members of the public, uh, you can stay on the call. Uh, the board is gonna go into a closed determination to determine whether or not the items qualify for executive session. If they qualify, the city attorney will come back out to the public and let the public know if they qualify and what they're about in general. And then he will return to executive session. The board will have this executive session meeting and he, and then at that point, the board will return back to this open meeting. So we encourage the general public and the press to stay on the call. We will be back out once the executive session, if it is determined that they qualify for executive session. Once the executive session is over, they will return to open. Uh, so we encourage the public to stay on the call. Um, also, when we adjourn this meeting, uh, this, this afternoon, at the end, we're going to adjourn in remembrance of the, uh, COVID-nineteen, uh, patients who have passed on. Uh, so we will do that once we return back to the open session. So at this time, I will entertain a motion that we proceed into a closed determination. So move? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Davis, second by Alderman Irving, that we proceed into a closed determination. Uh, unreadiness, if there being none, Alderman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman, uh, Frazier?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Smith?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman, uh, Alderman Irving?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Davis?
Aye.
How do you vote, Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
Okay, uh, it's unanimous that we proceed. Uh, members, you should receive, I think in the form of a text, uh, the call information from Pam to sign in onto that closed determination. Uh, thank you, so members of the board, go ahead on and hang up and get that information and let's go into the closed determination. Uh, Alderman Mathis, we're gonna adjourn, uh, in memory of Jerry Kane, I know you mentioned. Um, we also, uh, Sarah, uh, the lady who passed away today from the virus, uh, did you wanna mention her? We also, Sarah, the lady who passed away today from the virus, did you want to mention her or hold off?
Um, I've seen it on Facebook quite a bit, so I'm assuming that it's out there, and it's oh, gosh, Ms. Coley Taylor. Let me think of her first name. I didn't know her personally. Give me just
I can, I can see if I can pull it.
Perry Washington, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Perry, yes, Perry Washington?
Yes, she was one of my students. Terry Washington, Jerry Kane. Well, you know, we already, I think we did it for Kiwan. Kiwan Bates was one of my students. But I'm not just pulling out my students. Those were the three that I sent to you yesterday when you sent out the last statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Vivian, it was Vivian Coley.
Vivian Coley, okay.
And Taylor. Vivian Coley Taylor.
Okay. Is Billy Joe on?
No, he still hasn't made it.
Well, you know, we don't have any action, correct, Bob?
That's right, Mayor.
Okay, so if this is okay with the board, we have a quorum. Alderman Mathis is on the call, Alderman Smith, Alderman Irving, Alderman Davis, Alderman Dillard. We have the city clerk, city attorney. So we have a quorum, and all we're going to do is adjourn and adjourn in the memory of Ms. Mathis' name, the individuals.
Excuse me, Perry Washington, Jerry Kane, Reverend Kiwan Bates.
Okay, and Sarah?
Vivian Coley Taylor.
Okay. So if you guys don't have a problem, we can go ahead on and adjourn without Alderman Frazier. And in the meeting, if it's your prerogative. If you want to wait, we can wait. Is that Alderman Frazier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So move? All right, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn in memory of Terry Washington. Is it Terry or Perry, Ms. Mathis?
I was thinking it was Perry.
Okay. Terry Washington, Kiwan Bates, Jerry Kane, and Vivian Coley Taylor, correct, Sarah?
Correct.
Okay. It's not a debatable motion, so therefore I will call for the vote. Alderman Mathis?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Irving?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard?
Aye.
There you have it. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Meeting adjourned. Thank you. God bless each of you. God bless our city. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.